Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Selectman meeting. July 13, 2015. It is now 6:30. And can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, before we have the public comment, I would like to make a few changes in the meeting format. One of them was suggested by my fellow Selectmen, Mr. Watson. From now on, the audience will have to come up to the podium, name, address, and what have you, and speak through the podium. There's going to be no more speaking in the hall amongst groups. If you have something to say, please leave the hall, say it in the hallway, and come back in. I'm not going to have any more talking in the hall other than the person at the podium at the time. As far as my fellow Selectmen, I'm going to ask that each one of you gets my attention. Before you can speak, raise your hand, eyeball me, whatever you've got to do. I've heard a lot of criticism about the last meeting. I will take the blame. I'm the Chair of this board, and I'll make it right. It will not happen again, and we'll leave it at that. So, the residents' comments will start. If someone wants to represent... I know the summer program was coming in, so if someone wants to represent it, come up to the podium and say what you need to say.
Bill may want to remind him of the three-minute rule. He may want to try to remind folks about...
I've got to remind you that we're going to have a three- to five-minute rule on speaking.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Good evening. I am Matt Costongway, the Director of the Groveland Summer Recreation Program. And I have a letter that I would like to read to the Board this evening. It's to Selectman McDonald, and it's also CCing the other members of the Board, as well as Denise. Dear Selectman McDonald, I'm writing this letter to you as a result of the Board of Selectmen's meeting on June 29, 2015. As you know, I have been the Groveland Summer Recreation Program Director for the past 11 years. I also grew up in Groveland, attended the Bagnell School, and am a Penntucket graduate. I have to say that after the meeting on June 29, I felt personally humiliated and attacked by you, and in my opinion, for no reason. I have put 110 percent of my time and effort into the summer program and into developing it to what it is today. I have listened to the residents of this town, and based on their needs, I have established a quality, safe, and accommodating summer program. Over the past 11 years, I have expanded the hours of the program, the overall length of the program each summer, and added to the offerings, which now include nine field trips over seven weeks, weekly swim time at a local pool, weekly story and reading time for our younger attendees, and added enrichment opportunities for the children, which include science and math-based activities. We now even offer guitar and singing lessons, all for no additional charge. I challenge you to find a local, town-sponsored summer recreation program that offers more than us, or even equal to what we offer. I feel it was inappropriate of you to negatively question how I run the program and how I determine payroll wages, for example. Much thought is put into determining hourly rates for all staff, including myself. I do not just pull numbers out of a hat. According to the American Camp Association and other sources open to viewing by anyone online, my wage falls within and even under the median day camp director's salary. As you know, I am now a school principal in Tewksbury. To say that I am double-dipping because I have this job and a seven-week summer program director's job is outlandish. Just so you know, every day that I am not in Tewksbury and working at the summer program, I take a vacation day, and when I am not present at the summer program for parts of a day, I do not get paid. I am not taking advantage of either town by having both jobs, and I take great offense at that comment made by you. You don't know me, however, I am someone of moral character and pride myself on having integrity. Also, please keep in mind that every payroll that is created, every bill that is paid, every registration payment that this program receives is processed through Town Hall. I do not personally issue the paychecks or pay the bills. This is not my summer program. It is run by the town, and I oversee it for the town. The Board of Selectmen approves each warrant that is submitted. You treated me like I've been keeping secrets from this Board. Each payroll has always been approved through this Board. If you disagree with how this process has worked in the past, I shouldn't have been publicly attacked, as I have done nothing wrong. As I stated at the last meeting, I have always been willing to come in front of this Board at any time during the past 11 years. If this Board would have requested any additional information from me, I would have provided it. The Board never asked me to come and speak, and again, that was not my fault. I am looking forward to having open communication with all the members of the Board of Selectmen and excited to have conversation about this great summer program that the town of Groveland offers. There was a long discussion at the last meeting about the excess funds that we have. Again, please keep in mind that these excess funds would not be there if this program was not successful. It's not simply the fact that we do not pay rent for the use of Bagnell School, which is a town-old building after all, and we are a town-run program, or the fact that the Penntucket District has never asked us to pay for electricity, as one example. Even if there were charges such as this, which we welcome in the future, we would still have a large amount of excess funds. It is exciting to think of how these funds can now be used, such as creating new workable fields at the Bagnell School and building a new pavilion out there as well. I am all for that idea and look forward to having the Board, along with Denise, determine the correct approach to make sure the funds are being spent in a lawful way following the correct procedures. I am happy that the Building Committee for the Bagnell School presented this proposal to the town. Regarding your concern about the program accepting children from outside of Groveland, as I said at the prior meeting, we have never once advertised outside of Groveland, and registrations from these families were made through word of mouth because of the quality of the program we offer. If members of this Board did not want children from outside of Groveland to attend, all that needed to happen was for me to be told that. I was never told that. Again, I have not done anything wrong. Please know that the children of Groveland who attend have not been placed at a disadvantage because of the children who attend from outside of Groveland. As our enrollment numbers have continued to increase over the years, I have simply hired additional staff to keep our staff-to-child ratio low, such as the eight-to-one ratio that it is at this year. In the future, we can look at possibly having two different rates for children who attend from town and outside of town, if that is something that the Board determines it wants. The excess funds that exist are partially due to the fact that we have children from outside of Groveland who attend our program, again, because of the quality. If we did not offer a quality summer program, these excess funds would not be present, and we would just be like the hundreds of other towns in New England that lose money as a result of offering a town-run summer recreation program. In the future, I kindly ask that you treat me in a more positive manner, as I have done nothing but given my all into shaping this program into what it is today: a safe, a reliable, a fun, and an overall positive attribute that you should be happy and proud to have in this great town. Respectfully, Matthew Costongway.
Thank you.
I think it's only fair. Yeah, it's only fair, yeah.
Okay. As far as personally attacking you, the substance of what I said and asked, I'm going to stand by in substance. The form, I kind of had a rocky attitude and delivery. I apologize for the demeanor.
I appreciate the apology.
In terms of the substance of it, I think I'm on point in asking. I think it's valid. People in Groveland know that previously Jim Day ran the program, and he was paid about $5,000. I asked you questions about how you determined your own pay. It's more than double. It's almost triple. I talked to my constituents. I talked to people. They give me feedback. I'm not alone. Some people have alleged that you're not always there. I don't know that. Maybe at the end of the summer, we could see the time cards. Mr. Watson asked you if you paid for a 52-week job. You said you were. So, you have another full-time job. So, can you do two jobs at the same time? I mean, I didn't say that you're doing anything illegal, but people should know that you do have a 52-week-a-year job, and if you're leaving that program to go to another, it's legitimate that people know what you're doing. So, is that a personal attack on you? I'd like to know who's running the program, what you're doing, and why. So, if there's an explanation for that, maybe that's what we need to do, is clear the air, if people are okay with it. Part of it, I did shoot the messenger. I'm sorry for that. I'm more ticked off at the Board of Selectmen for the lack of oversight over the years, and I may have taken that out on you, okay? That program has not been reviewed. Part of the legal process in town is that all revolving funds are supposed to present their financial reports to the town meeting. This past town meeting, the only one that did that was Tom Wakefield of the ZBH Board. So, you know, there's been rampant neglect and oversight in the financial matters within the town, and I'm frustrated with that.
Three-minute rule.
Part of my frustration was, I did the research on the revolving fund. The statute says you can do certain things with it. I was frustrated at some of my colleagues here that they didn't read the law. I'm sitting here by myself. So, you know what? Apologize for shooting the messenger, but as far as asking you how the program's run, I have received criticism that the program is too restrictive and it does not accommodate working parents. I was at a doubleheader baseball game over in Western Newbury for my kid on Sunday, and someone came up to me, and he was talking to me about the program, and he voiced his opinion. I was at another Little League game. Someone come up to me and said, "It would be nice if he could send his kid to the program for a week so that they could participate." So, it does irk me and some other people in town where they hear that there are kids from Haverhill and other towns in the program, but they want some flexibility to accommodate their work schedule, that that accommodation is not made. So, I think those points, and those are constructive criticisms. So, I apologize. You know, it could be flippant and go too far, you know? But there is, within some of what I said, constructive criticism about the program. But I never put the program down saying, "You don't treat the kids right." I never said, "You guys aren't doing your job," in that regard. So, I wish you wouldn't take it to that degree.
We've got to keep it at the three minutes.
All right.
Can I just say one thing about the salary? Because I think it's an important point, though.
It's done and over with.
Just when...
I think Dan's had his part, and all I'm going to say...
Just the program is much longer hours than when Jim Day ran it, so... Thank you.
We're going to review it at the end of the season.
Right. So, we'll leave it... At the end of that last discussion, it was discussed that the 2015 season will not be bothered with. The program's running. It's going to run the way it's running. And what's going to happen is 2016, we'll have your committee in. We'll sit with them. We'll talk, and we'll... Okay, thank you very much. All set?
My name is Lacey Page. I'm at 425 Main Street.
You can't speak. We just...
Oh.
We're all done.
Oh.
Okay. So, that's... What's that?
Why are we all done?
Because I said in the beginning of the meeting that there was going to be one person talking on behalf of it, and that was it.
I'm not talking about that. Can I talk about another subject?
Is it on the agenda?
No, for open comment. It'll be two minutes, I promise.
Yeah, if it's open comments.
It's just two minutes. And what I wanted to say was that I saw the video of most of the meeting in June, and I have a really big concern with...
Inez, you need to identify yourself.
Oh, Inez Steele, 6th Union Street, Groveland, Massachusetts. And I just have a big concern about, and I don't need a response or anything, just out there for all of you to consider, about the decision-making process on the Board of Selectmen. When the subject, different subjects come up, and I don't want to revisit that subject. I want to revisit the process, not the issues, specific issues. It seems to me that it's very difficult for you all to make on-the-spot decisions about things that you haven't had time to look into, you haven't had time to examine. I'm also very concerned about the dynamics of the group, in particular, what Denise had to sit through at the last meeting. As a citizen of Groveland, I am embarrassed, and I apologize to her on behalf of my small little plot of land in town. And those are my concerns about the process at Board of Selectmen, and thank you very much for listening.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So... Is anyone else? I'm going to do like two or three, and that will be it. Okay, so everyone's all set? It's got to be a different topic.
Well, it kind of re-writes everything. I don't understand. As a citizen, you don't want to hear my comments about...
I think just allow it. I mean, it'll be the last one.
Okay, well, go ahead. This will be the last one.
Of course.
My name is Lacey Page. I'm at 425 Main Street. And it kind of goes off of what she had just said, that I'm disappointed in the manner in which the meetings have been conducted, that it's my opinion that this Board should be showing a lot more respect for its members, committees, organizations, and people of the town. I've only lived here for a year, but I'm well aware that not only does Groveland rely upon its employees, but the volunteers also play a huge role, and that the Board of Selectmen needs to be showing a lot more appreciation and respect for them than they do. That... Let's see. The Board of Selectmen are the face of Groveland, and that they should be holding themselves to a much higher standard and conducting themselves in a much more professional manner than they have been. That the behavior has been a disgrace. You should be working with the people, volunteers, and employees of this town and making decisions based off of what is best for Groveland as a whole, not what works best for your own specific individual families. Specifically speaking, Selectman McDonald, the personal attack on both the Finance Director and the summer program is very uncalled for and completely ill-mannered. To say that the summer program is junk and you don't like the summer camp because it doesn't fit your family's personal needs is very ignorant. To compare hiring...
All right, okay. Now, I ask you, you're on the topic again. I'm sorry. I'm going to shut it off here. It's just going to... What?
Hey, listen.
But the point is, I said it wasn't on top...
Say, hand. Name-call me.
You can't...
If it's truth...
But the point is, we're not going to say...
It's your opinion.
All right, enough. We're not going to have name-calling back and forth, okay? We're not. I'm sorry. I'm running the meeting. Dan, let me... I'm running the meeting. Sorry. I don't want any more name-calling. I said to you clearly that it was going to stay on the topic. Someone already talked about this. So, I think we get the picture. I clearly get the picture.
Well, I apologize that as a town member, you don't feel that my opinions are valid.
I think your opinions are invalid. I do. So, the... I will say again, as the Chairman of the Board, and people in town know me. I'm the most fairest person. I try to be the fairest person. I've heard what you people have said. I cannot have, you know, 10 people up here all night. We're on the topic. We can't point fingers at people individually. That's the reason why we're here. That's why you people are here. We don't want that. We want to run this as a good Board, helping the town, helping the volunteer...
Just change it so that the Board is not being run like it was the last meeting. It's a disgrace.
We're going to work on it. This is a new Board. It's a five-member Board. We had a three-member Board. We have to iron out.
So, then maybe there should be meetings outside of this where you guys are ironing things out. She shouldn't be attacked. He shouldn't have ever been attacked.
I agree, and...
And you let it happen, though. There was a four-hour meeting where you sat there and let him attack everyone.
Okay. You know something? I've never been a Chair before. I took the... I don't know if you were here earlier. I took the blame for the meeting. I took the blame. I will change it. I promise you. I will change it. I'm the Chair.
You need to show that there's going to be change.
Well, I will. If I can get the meeting going, I'm going to show that there's going to be change, okay? And again, I apologize on behalf of the town. I took the blame earlier on before anyone said anything. And you know something? I want to be... I'm not trying to be wise when I say this. Everyone in the town thinks it's an easy job to come up here and sit here and do what we're doing. It isn't. It isn't. It's a voluntary position. I'm not getting paid. I make errors. I'm only human.
But none of the people you guys are all barking at are getting to be either. Tell us tomorrow, but a lot tomorrow.
I'm not saying... That's not my point. My point is, what I'm trying to say is, my point is, we make errors, okay? We're human. We're here volunteering our time. No one deliberately on the Board went out, I don't believe, and tried to harm someone. We didn't. It was conversation that got out of control, and we had two apologies. I think Matt... Well, I don't want to keep going with this. We have someone coming at 7 o'clock. I have to hold a meeting at 7, a hearing. We can go all night on it. Let's just pick up the pieces and move forward. Joe had his hand. This will be it.
Regarding discussion on Selectment meeting procedures, I want to thank the speakers. It's not easy, and it's always courageous for anybody on either side of this table to step forward and speak publicly about their passions. I'm going to recommend to the Board, about 30 years ago, I'm not exactly sure what year. 30 years ago, this town adopted parliamentary procedures, town meeting time. So, what I'd like to recommend to the Board, we don't have to make a motion. We can just have consensus, is we ask Denise to find money somewhere and get five of these books so that they will always be available for the five members on the Board of Selectmen, and we devote some study time to it. And then, maybe in August, I'd like to suggest, in August, I'd like to suggest that we either have the Massachusetts Municipal Association or Town Council come in and provide a workshop. And that should be an open town, a public meeting, of course. But we can have a workshop so that we can get a review on proper parliamentary procedure on how to run meetings. Simple, simple solution. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. This was put in place by some well-thinking, very experienced people a long time ago. I think I was in high school when this thing was adopted here in this town, a town meeting. So, thank you for your time.
The bottom line is, is, I think Mrs. Page just said it. You need respect from the town people, and you need respect from us. And when the respect, both sides break down, we're going to have problems. So, just a respect issue, and hopefully we can iron it out as a new Board and what have you, and get it taken care of. But again, I can't apologize enough what happened, and all I can say is I will get it taken care of. I think Mr. Wood...
Yeah, that's a good background, the book anyways. I mean, I'll buy it on Amazon or something. But again, it goes back to Bill's thing. It's about respect. Look at the number of people here. We'd never have this many people in here. People are ticked off about what happened last time. There were insults made. There were attacks made, not just on the people of town, but the people on the Board themselves. And I was frustrated. I was ticked off at the last meeting, right? I am happy that this group is here. I'm happy that people stood up and made it well-known that they are angry at the way that the Board conducted themselves. I apologize to you, the Director of the Summer Camp. That was uncalled for, everything that you went through, and I'm sorry on behalf of myself.
I'll let you go once. All right, so we're going to move on. Again, my sincere apology to everybody here, and you have my word. As a Chair, I will work on my straw coming.
Do we have consensus on my idea?
Yeah. I have consensus. Do you have consensus on Joe's idea?
I don't think you need to vote.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so we have consensus.
And you can find the money somewhere?
Take care.
Thank you. I'll flip the $5.
All right, so... I need, Mike, if you could do the warrants.
Oh, I would love to do the warrants.
May I? We do have Claire here, so I don't know if you want to get that in before the 7 o'clock public hearing. We can come back to the warrants.
Okay.
Yeah, we can always do those later, yeah.
All right, so Claire is here to talk about the release of the Shanahan... I call it the Shanahan... Building. Do you want to come up? Yeah, the lease, yeah. Do you want to hop to the podium, please?
Claire Walsh, 478 Main Street, President of the Groveland Historical Commission and Society. I'm here to renew the lease, if you will so do that, for the Historical Society Building at Shanahan Field, known as the Knox Building. It's a five-year lease that we've had for several decades now. So, it's up to the Board of Selectmen to renew it, you know, at the end of five years.
Okay. So, is there any more discussion on the lease? Anyone have any questions for Claire?
The lease is for what? Just so the public understands, what is this for?
It's for the land that the building is actually sitting on.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Okay, the building belongs to the Historical Society.
Right.
But it had to be put somewhere when Dr. Dark gave it to the Historical Society, so it wound up there.
And that building was moved from the original location where...
From where Dr. Dark's building is now.
Really interesting.
Took him all day.
And we do this every year, renew the lease?
Every five.
Every five, okay. I didn't know that.
Want to make it a longer term.
I didn't know that.
It's fine with me.
I don't want to extend the agenda item. Thank you. Thank you very much, Claire.
I got a question. Go ahead, Ed.
I just got some comments from some of the neighbors there about... They were a little concerned about when it went from a museum to rental property. Can you just explain what happened with the museum that you had there for the artifacts from the Historical Society?
Everything's at Washington Hall, waiting to be set up. And that'll be happening soon.
Great. Okay, so, any more discussion? Get a vote to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to renew the lease at 423 Main Street, as described by Claire, for five-year period.
Anyone want to second it?
Second.
All set. Seconded, right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set, thanks.
Thank you.
We could probably squeeze in the warrants, because we have to kick off the public hearing right at 7, so maybe we can squeeze them in. Do you want to go ahead, Mike?
Sure.
That's okay, Bill. Because we got to kick off right at 7.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 15-55 for the sum of $59,735.26 for three days.
So moved.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 16...
I have to vote on it.
Well, that's what I was waiting for.
Okay, so, do we have a vote on the payroll warrant?
Right, so I seconded it, so let's get a vote on it.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, next one, Mike.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 16-03 in the sum of $110,584.84 for seven days.
All in favor?
I'll second that, and now we don't need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm just going to look at you to second it, and then we'll...
I've been doing this for three years.
We're doing it for three weeks.
You're taking over.
Sure. Deduction warrant, motion to approve deduction warrant 15-53A in the sum of $26,474.55.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill warrant, motion to approve Bill warrant 15-55 in the sum of $356,237.56.
Seconded. Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Bill warrant 15-55C in the sum of $5,628.52.
Seconded. Seconded. Second, DeMore?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last one, motion to approve Bill warrant 16-03 in the sum of $891,459.25.
Seconded. Joe? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Seconded by Bill?
Okay, so that's all taken care of?
Yes.
Or a couple minutes early before?
Nice.
You could do... You do have an appointment. I didn't put a time, so whenever you had time to do it, for our part-time custodian facilities coordinator, if you wanted to do that item.
We'll have four minutes to do it, so that's good. Sorry, Bill.
Okay, so, regarding the appointments, we have the custodian's facility position, Jim Greenberg, who was...
Nope, that's not for public... That item's not to read aloud. That was just for your first person.
So, you just want to read, and that's it?
So, the appointment is for Tokala Sage, a Groveland resident, for the part-time custodian and facilities coordinator. Effective start date would be Monday, August 3.
Okay. Is there any motion to accept?
The person here?
No, because I didn't know what time you were going to actually get to it on the agenda.
Motion to accept, seconded.
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded.
All right, DeMore. I second it.
Did someone actually make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill, did you make the motion?
I asked for a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, we have a motion?
I'll take... I'll present that as a motion.
It's seconded, I heard. It's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, are we close enough to 7 yet to do that, or are we going to wait a few minutes?
Has to wait till 7, I think.
Just wait, that's all.
There's some votes. You could go to the votes of the Board with the minutes if you wanted to vote on...
Okay, so, we'll go to votes and discussion. What do you have, Denise? My packet's so messed up right now.
Minutes from the June 15 meeting?
June 15. I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from the June 15.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the only one.
No, the next item is Diana Cummings, Adult Services Librarian from the library, has resigned effective this Wednesday. Since you are the appointing authority, you just have to accept her resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept Diana Cummings resignation, letter dated July 1, posted. Letter dated July first, posted at Town Hall at July second.
I'll, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. At seven o'clock.
Okay, seven o'clock. We're going to have a public hearing, um, at seven, on behalf of the lease, um, of the water and sewer commission and the land. Purchased formally from the William Angelini property. So.
So you need a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's open and discussion.
And someone needs to actually read the.
Want me to read it, Bill?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll read the, uh, information for the public hearing. The chair must open the public hearings at seven. Bill should ask for, so, uh, here we go. The Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, July thirteenth at seven PM at the main meeting room, Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass, on the application of the Town of Groveland Water Commissioners for permit renewal for earth removal activities on property located on Zachary Lane, Groveland, Mass, and shown on assessors map thirty-three parcels, six, and ten. A copy of the plans are on file in the Town's Clerk's office and are available for viewing Monday through Thursday, nine AM to four-thirty PM, and Monday evening from six PM to eight PM. Groveland Board of Selectmen. Bill, then you wanna take a look at that? See the instructions?
Okay, can I get the water and sewer commission to come up to the podium and request the renew of the permit?
Request for what?
Renew the permit?
Yes, we'd like to formally request, uh, from, uh, our meeting, uh, Jim Sheen, uh, Groveland Water and Sewer, that it was voted at our meeting for you guys to come before you, 'cause you have the granting authority to, uh, issue the permit for Mr. Angelini's gravel removal permit.
And there's gonna be no changes at all?
No changes, it was all part of the original PNS, if you guys remember, some of you do. So, we reduced the, uh, purchase and sale price of the property, and Mr. Angelini was, see, and I was in their business, is going to, uh, remove the gravel, and then, according to the bylaw, and, uh, overseeing by the Town and Conservation, uh, us.
Is there any other concerns with the board members?
Question. I wanted to ask, uh, Mike Dempsey, uh, this is in the, um, aquifer overlay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any risk to the aquifer and, um, and stripping gravel and dirt out of there? Does, does it pose no risk?
Yeah, no, it doesn't, doesn't pose any risk to the aquifer. According to the gravel removal bylaw, there's a limit to how, uh, deep, um, the gravel removal can go, and it's within those specifications.
It's based on the high water mark of, of the property, it has to stay above that.
And that was all done by the engineers, too, they set all that.
Correct.
Do, do you have any concerns with renewal of the, uh, the lease?
No, uh, I have been working with Mr. Angelini over the past, uh, two months, and Bob Arakalian for the town. We, Bob and I developed a checklist that I took from, I'm sorry, I didn't make enough copies, but you can just quickly pass it down and look at it. That's a, that's a summary of the, uh, items that are in the, uh, both the gravel removal permit that you grant, and also the, um, conservation permit that we granted back in, um, twenty fourteen, uh, twenty thirteen, I believe. So, uh, what I did was summarize that. I work with Bob, that's a checklist that he's gonna use to, um, keep an eye on, uh, the items are being met. And then if you have any questions, or if, uh, the Conservation Commission has any question, or the Water Board has any questions, Bob can present that checklist. According to the permit, Mr. Angelini takes, um, the gravel out of one of, um, five sections at a time. He can't move on to the next one without completing all the work in the, in the previous section. And so, Bob Arakalian will be keeping a checklist for each section to make sure all of the requirements of the permits are being met. So, I feel confident that, uh, with our efforts between Bob and myself, that we can keep a pretty good eye on things. The other thing that I wanna say is that, um, because of you granting this permit, we were able to save probably two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars from the purchase of that land. And the reason, one of the reasons why we wanted to purchase that land is because it is a potential well site for at least one, if not two, additional wells that sometime in the future, maybe not five years, maybe ten, who knows when, uh, we'll be able to actually site another well there on that property. So, um, that's why both water and conservation work together to acquire the property. And we were able to do it thanks to your, thanks to the Board of Selectmen granting this permit.
Any last, have any, have a comment?
Denise.
So, just to touch base, I did speak with Town Council on this, 'cause they were, um, a part of the initial, um, earth removal permit. It is an annual permit. It is dated July fourteenth, twenty fourteen, so we were under the gun to renew it. However, there's some confusion because, um, it was originally discussed, a public hearing was held July fourteenth last year, but then there was some discussions in August, there was some discussions in December. December, it was finalized, and we actually didn't close on the property until February. So, we felt it was safe to stick with the actual date of the permit which we were required to do, although he only was able to start acting on the permit as of February third, when the town purchased the property. So.
Does that mean he's ten months behind the original plan?
Uh, yes, it took that much time to actually close on the property. So, um, in the future, for the future years, Town Council has said you would have to go back and do the full application process with the notice of intent, condition of orders. All those things should be done on an annual basis. But because he's really, and actually, Mr. Angelini only got the key for the gate on Memorial Day, so he's only been working on the property for a little over a month. So, they said because the property, the permit has only been good for really a month, that it wasn't necessary to go through the full process right now. As long as there are no changes. If everything is still the same as it was, um, then, then they were fine with that.
He hasn't actually started moving dirt out yet, has he? I heard he just did the clearing so far. And, just to clear it for the public, I've gotten a lot of people complaining, and I think I've already heard Mike say, um, about the tree cutting, and they feel like the tree cutting has gone over. And I've heard Mike say that it, it, he's supposed to be where he is as far as the tree cutting goes, and he's in compliance and what have you. So, just because probably they're seeing the trees down, because obviously they've seen trees now, it's open and it looks different. But as far as you guys know, everything's good, as far as any trees being removed, it's in the guidelines.
That's correct.
Okay. Just to try to clear that up.
And on the tree cutting, some of those trees part of the, um, old reclamation, um, program. Some of those trees were put in place after the mining operations that come through there, and I think that, that was a point where they had cracked the, the water table. Part of the way to restore the land was to plant trees, that's called reclamation. Are those the trees that are coming down? I hope not.
I'm not sure that's the case, uh, that there may be a part of the original landslide.
New section, okay, I haven't been down there. You wanna bring a chainsaw in?
So you'll have to go to the podium.
Uh, and, if I?
Oh, you want more?
And, oh, no, 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 that's okay, that's all right. Good enough, thank you. Thank you for that.
Bob Arakalian, I'm road commissioner and the, uh, uh, site inspector. Uh, I'd like to change the traffic pattern. Right now, it says to exit the pit and turn right to go to Washington Street, then take a left up Washington Street to the stop sign, and take another left onto Salem Street. And then come in empty the other way. I wanna change that, reverse that, because we have a bad culvert on Center Street. If you take a right, we replace, we had two bad culverts, we repl, we replaced one, but we still have another one to replace. So, I don't want the loaded trucks really going over that. I mean, once in a while, you're gonna get a truck going over it, but not, um, on a steady basis. So, I'd rather change the, uh, traffic pattern.
Okay.
Are you? I'm sorry. Are you suggesting temporarily, or?
No, for the, for the.
For the remainder, okay.
It's only six acres, it's not gonna be that long anyway.
No, that's fine. As long as it works and.
I know that, I know that in the, in, when we discussed this before, there was problems with the neighbors. They didn't want them taking a left up, out Center Street because of the loaded trucks. That's, I think that's what we ended up saying, we're taking a right out. But I mean, if it's, if it's a, if it's a safety issue, we oughta.
Yeah.
Make a left, I mean.
We have a bad culvert there.
Right, so you don't wanna have a crushed culvert and someone get hurt.
No, we're gonna, we, we, you know, if it gets too bad, I'll have to post it, like I, I had to post one on Uptec.
Right.
Road a couple of years ago, so.
So, I guess if, if, if it's a safety situation, I see that we probably need to change it to come out and go left. I mean, I don't know if we need to have a, more say on it or whatever, but.
We, we should.
You can't sweep up the culvert?
What's that?
That was just redone.
You can't shore up the culvert at all, is?
No. No, it's a bottomless culvert. It was built back in the, uh, before the nineteen hundreds.
That culvert is the one before the one you guys just replaced. It's on the lower side.
Right, and doesn't have any foundation, it's bottomless.
Okay.
Okay, bottomless.
No footing, no foundation.
It'll sink, is what you're saying.
Okay.
I don't know what it means.
I'll make a motion that we change the traffic flow pattern to come out of the Center Street pit, taking a left, to prevent a broken culvert and possibly a safety hazard.
There's no, uh, and this is probably a dumb question, but there's no difference of a loaded truck versus a unloaded truck as far as sound? I mean, I know in weight, but as far as sound or anything else?
No. No, actually unloaded makes more sound.
Okay. Well, I, I just, 'cause I, I would, I could see someone saying, well, now I have more, more noise coming down my street, leaving.
No, but we can go both ways, I just didn't wanna limit it to one way. I mean, they can go out.
They're pounding that culvert all the time, right.
Right, I didn't want all the loaded trucks going over that.
Right.
So, I'd rather change it to just don't have any restriction. Yeah, no flow pattern.
All right.
Does anyone object? To the traffic change?
I made a motion, but I need to change it according to Bob, because Bob's saying that he'd rather see no flow pattern.
No flow.
Let them come out on their own.
Right.
Is what he's saying, and hopefully it won't put the hammering all in one direction. So, I'll change my motion, saying that there'll be no traffic flow pattern coming out of the Center Street.
Restriction.
Restriction of the gravel removal permit.
There was no mo, uh, second on that, so I'll second this motion.
Second invite, Joe? Any other discussion?
Yeah. If, if you're gonna change it to, uh, the no restriction or cha, uh, you, you need to get comment from the neighbors, again?
This is a public hearing, and it was advertised, and the neighbors were notified, so this would've been the time they would've come. I don't know if there are neighbors here that you'd like to address, but it was advertised.
Thank you.
Okay, so we.
Is there, can, can we leave it open to say, if you do get complaints, that you can scatter it? You know, some days you go this way, some days you go that way. I mean, just to keep it open, so it's just, it's not a free-for-all for whatever you feel like doing that day.
We could.
I did, 'cause you know someone's gonna, you know, raise a hair about something going on.
It's not gonna be as.
I know, but something's gonna happen.
It's not enough, it's not a lot of material, it's not a, it's not like it used to be, used to be two hundred loads a day, a hundred and eighty loads a day going out of there, like thirty years ago, it's not that anymore.
So, all we need to do is, we need to sit there and say, we vote on it, and if there's a complaint, we, we, you know.
We're subject to review.
Subject to review.
And Mr. Angelini's here, so I'm sure if you had an issue, he would be more than happy to change the traffic pattern.
Absolutely. See how we go.
Has it been worked out with the guys with the football permit to walk around?
They haven't started yet.
What?
Bill, you just gotta say your name and.
Okay.
Football, you're on.
New football came in, they wanted to.
William Angelini, seven do hers, Groveland.
They wanted to practice on the field, and they were gonna approach you and make sure they're not in your way, you're not in their way, vice versa, that type of thing.
We can work together. No problem.
It's big enough.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And he's gonna be done at three-thirty most of the time. Three-thirty, I, I said, I came in the other night.
Yeah, I remember, yeah. All right.
That's, that was.
No worries.
No.
So, let's move in the question, we'll put it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
So, is there any other discussion on the public hearing, or else you have to close, you would have to vote to authorize the permit and then close the public hearing, if that's what you choose?
Two separate votes.
Okay, so we just voted on the flow change?
You voted on removing the top two.
We need to vote on renewing the five-year permit.
One year.
One year, one-year permit, um, of the earth removal permit. So, if I have a motion?
Motion to renew the permit?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you need a motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll make a motion to close the public hearing? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All set.
After discussions, ask for, uh, just, after motions, ask for discussions on everything. Every time we make a motion, any discussion, I mean.
Okay. So, we're all set with the public hearing?
Yes, you are.
Great.
The public hearing is closed. So, at seven forty-five.
We can do the other thing, right, the?
Can we do the seven forty-five? We better not, 'cause it may not be here.
Seven forty-five, I would hold off, you have people coming for that.
We got the fiscal fifteen end-of-year transfers.
You could go back to your vote, so you could have your recreation committee discussion, whichever you'd like to do.
I gotta get this packet, I gotta get this packet, get flipped upside down.
You wanna, yeah, why don't we do the, um, recreation committee?
But then it may not all be here, right? It's just amongst ourselves anyway, right? All right, so we'll do the eight, the, the recreation committee intention, intentional board discussion. It's amongst ourselves, it's not open to the public, and this was in discussion when they were in before with us. We were gonna discuss how we were going to bring in line with the article.
I'd like to open up, uh, this is a discussion we began a year ago, and I'm glad to see that we're addressing it now. The focus is the recreation committee, which is a town-appointed committee. So, these are the three concerns that were expressed by Denise and were echoed by the previous Board of Selectmen. Number one, uh, the Board of Selectmen should be very thoughtful about allowing any group, uh, control of, of valuable town resources, such as fields. And there's a host of, uh, issues for that sometimes, and it happens once in a while, but we have to be mindful that, uh, we don't receive the criticism that there are special interests that have taken over a particular resource such as a field. That, to me, is very minor, I don't see much of that going on. The next two, however, are really a concern. That first one was something that we had discussed last year. The next two, to me, are absolutely important. The recreation committee currently collects fees and maintains their own money. This is a violation of the law, that may have changed, this is from last year. All money collected should be general receipts and credited to the general fund. A recreation budget should be established for approved expenses. So, again, the recreation committee collects fees and maintains their own money, and we need to, something that I had mentioned before many times, it's the money flow that's the issue, not the volunteerism. Volunteerism is something we must rely on in this town, we just need to watch the money flow and get those corrected, those little tweaks. So, that's, that's a concern. And the next concern, which is financial also, the recreation committee is paying vendors on their own, separate from the legal, municipal process. The town accounted has no oversight on their spending, this cannot continue. And I know I have three minutes, so maybe Mike or someone else can take, uh, and, and explain, maybe read portions of this. But there are two remedies. One of them is to keep the appointed committee, and then there's a set of rules, or the other one is we can disband the appointed committee with a set of rules. So, if anybody, you know, would like to present that and.
Before Mike, before you talk, I just gotta get this clarified. Number one, are we talking strictly recreation committee? We're not talking baseball, we're not talking soccer.
Recreation committee.
I just wanna make sure that the public understands, 'cause there's been a lot of talk around, what have you. I wanna make sure that, that everyone watching this on TV realizes this has got nothing to do with the Groveland baseball, the Groveland softball, or the Groveland, um.
You soccer.
Soccer.
Softball's in recreation, so softball.
And, uh, you can't talk, I'm sorry, but, I mean, I, I, I'll get.
This is just the appointed recreation committee and what they.
Right, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to clarify, that's all I'm trying to do. So, this is strictly the recreation committee, period.
Correct.
Okay, alright, so go ahead and move on, Mike, I just wanna clarify, because there's been a lot of talk about.
That's good, there's two remedies.
Well.
Do you want me to discuss them?
Yeah, I mean, she knows the most, you know.
Yeah, I know you know them better than I do, but.
Well, if I, I'll.
I'll let you go on then.
I'll just give a summary, so part of the issue was, and this is what was identified in the audit report, was that, um, as an appointed committee, as Joe articulated, the two issues. Uh, Mass General Law forty-one thirty-five states that the treasurer receives all money belonging to a city or town, and expends and accounts for it in according to the order of the city or town its authorized officers. No other person has authority to pay any bill of a municipal department. And Chapter forty-one fifty-two states that it's a responsibility of the town accountant to approve all payments of all bills for their departments before they are paid by the treasurer, and may disallow and refuse to approve for payment. In whole or in part, any claim is fraudulent, fraudulent, unlawful, or excessive. So, when I was asked last year, the two options were, keep the current recreation committee as an appointed committee, but reformat them, the money falls under the town, either establish a revolving account for recreation funds, or establish a budget for the recreation department. Or disband the appointed committee and let them continue to function as they are, as a separate, create a five oh one C three and let them continue to function. It's just, it needs to be one or the other, right now they're kinda functioning as both, they handle their own money, we're not issuing W twos or ten ninety-nines, we're not paying their bills, but they operate, you know, if they need insurance, it falls under us, if they need town council's opinion, it falls under us. So, it's just kind of operating on both, and we need to just decide which avenue the town wants to pursue with the recreation committee.
What, what did the audit suggest?
The audit won't suggest that, they just stated that it's, it's in violation, so we need to, as a town.
What does the audit prefer?
No, they, they really don't care, cause it's.
I thought they did care.
No, the audit, the audit just stated, we need to get them in compliance, there are two ways to get them into compliance, either, everything falls under the town, or nothing falls under the town. And they can continue to operate, they would establish a five oh one C three, do everything they're still doing, or they need to turn the money over and pay the bills through the town accountant.
Can I back you up a step, what falls under the recreation, what, what is, what falls under this category, what are we talking about, what leagues, whatever it is?
I don't know the specifics, cause we don't handle anything, so as, as Steve articulated, softball, I think they have a basketball program.
Can I have Steve come up to the podium and clarify that real quick, do you mind coming to the podium? I'm just curious, so that the people in the town understand what we're talking about.
Steve Merrill, fourteen Summer Street, it's softball, and it's basketball, and they do Groveland Day, but recently, we started helping them out, we being GYS, helping them out, because they don't have the same amount of labor that we do for volunteers, okay? That's it.
Thank you, okay, so, now we need to find A or B, what route we wanna take. Joe had his hand up?
When we receive a packet, normally, we should study it in advance, so that we can affect what Inez Steele had recommended, that sometimes these important decisions are not made on the spot. This could be an issue that we kinda reflect, I, I know you might like, not like this idea, we can maybe hold off on making a decision tonight, reflect on it, kinda study it a little bit more intently. I'm gonna support the board, um, I'm really, I'm honestly not partial to either one, I mean, disbanding the appointed committee and, and watching of the development of a five oh one C, um, come to fruition, there's eight or nine very dedicated people now, hopefully, they would wish to do that. If we did that, though, we have to wait till that restructuring is, um, approved at town meeting, or we can do a special town.
No, town meeting wouldn't have any say in that.
We didn't have to do either one, okay, so we can make that decision.
Town meeting would impact if you decide to, uh, put recreation, if you decide to have them turn the money over and you wanted to establish a revolving fund, that would require a town meeting.
Or the, yeah, the, and the other one is, you know, basically, we just, uh, allow the existing appointed committee, and through our appointment, we have some control, and then as long as the money flow is corrected, really, it's like taking the checkbook away, ultimately, uh, we could leave that alone. So, I'm, I will go either way, I, I'm really impartial, whatever it is the wish of the board, I will support.
Well, my wish is, and I'm only speaking on behalf of myself, my wish is to leave it alone, bring it in compliance, however, we need to bring it in compliance, they're doing a fine job, um, simple's better for me, I don't wanna, it's been going on, Joe, you know, with, the last board, we discussed this, we never were able to get it going, I know they're waiting for some decisions to be made.
Waiting a year for this, you know.
Right, and I would like to see it sooner than later, only because I would like to see simple, I, I think we can do it simple, I think.
So are you, if you'll allow me, are you suggesting Plan A, leave the rec committee as it is, as an appointed committee, and then we redirect or reformulate how money is handled? Is that what you're suggesting? With a revolving fund?
Well, I don't wanna get them locked into a situation, I mean, with a revolving fund, that the money grows like we've got going on with the summer program, I wanna make sure we do it right, so it's done right and it's not locked up, that's all I care.
Well, if you don't establish a revolving fund, then you would have to set aside, you would have to have a recreation budget to cover their expenses, so for this type of program, you really want a revolving fund, cause they take in fees for softball and basketball, and then they pay those fees back out for those programs, that would really be the best approach.
As long as it's not locked up, and they can go ahead and use it, and, you know, not, I mean, talk to the U and what have you, I think that makes the most sense to me, so.
Okay.
If they set themselves up, or we set them up as a five oh one C, is that more expensive for them to operate under that way, because they would have to get their own insurance and their own council and all that other stuff?
Yeah, if they need, I mean, you could, you could speak to Steve on if GYS needs town, I mean, it's legal opinions, I don't know, I don't really know if a youth sport, they have had some questions with ADA compliance issues and discrimination that I've spoken to them about, I don't know on these youth sports, if they need that, I don't really know.
As you said, it's not broken, it just needs to be corrected.
That's it.
And that's something you should work with them, I shouldn't answer for them, you know, my wife would kick my backside in, cause she's one of them, um, just go and have the conversation with them, that's why I said that in the last, I don't know how many times I've said it in the last three years, and I know several of you weren't here for that. But, you should have them and have the discussion with them, I would table, if I were you, I'd table the situation and have that discussion with them, but whatever concerns you had, discuss right now amongst yourselves, so you have those questions for them.
Well, I'd like to hear from the other board members, again, I'm neutral on it, but I will support that, that, um, you know, let's, let's give it one more meeting, it might not be the next one, cause it's a full agenda, but let's get the recreation people in, because, you know, at the end of the day, we could sit here and say, alright, we, we want a five oh one C to run it, but then we have to get people to actually decide to put together a five oh one C, which is a, a very long and lengthy, difficult, complicated, took me four years to get my five oh one C. So it's not that easy, they might not wanna do that, uh, we have nine, is it nine people?
Yes.
Nine people, pretty dedicated, uh, alright, I'm, I'm, I might be giving it away, I'm kinda slightly leaning to Plan A, before I think about it.
The only thing I'm gonna say is that.
Trying to be neutral.
The reason it came before us and not the board, because we wanted to discuss it amongst ourselves, and we were gonna come up with, we were gonna come up with a plan, and I think someone early tonight said in the audience, we need to start making some hard decisions, but I, I like Plan A myself, and I think that.
Yeah, I agree, but we're also, for a change, we're forty-five minutes ahead of schedule, and I don't think any of the rec committee is here to actually talk.
I don't know if they're coming.
It wasn't, they weren't invited.
They weren't invited.
Well, they could still be in the audience if they wanted to come up and, right, you, you could ask them to talk if they were here.
Well, they won't be, no, we have, I'm sorry, procedurally, we have to be very careful, because we put on the agenda item that this was on, this was gonna be closed to public comment, and so, if they're not here, and then we make a decision, so, well, wait a minute, you didn't invite us, um, so we either make a decision tonight, or we table it and invite them for comment. I don't think, we've waited a year and a half for this, I, I don't mind waiting another meeting or two.
I think Ed wants to say something.
I mean, I, I gotta concur with Bill, that the simplest is the best, uh, the committee's been doing a decent job, uh, they ought to continue, uh, and just get them into compliance. I, I'm gonna go along with that, I don't think we should disband the committee, and I don't think, I think that that has, uh, any positive, uh, for us at this time, but maybe, uh, table it till the next meeting and, um, just get them in here and quickly, we gotta take care of it.
I'll make a motion to maintain the status quo and just have them comply with the, um, the accounting, um, laws.
And that would be A?
A.
Right.
I mean, if they're non-compliant, just bring them into compliance, they need to.
Right, right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stick with what I said, I'm, I'm firm believing it, and I think the people on the committee, we're not harming them, we're basically leaving it the way it is, I'm gonna stick with A, so, um, I'll try it, I'll make a motion that we stick with A, leave it alone, and bring them in compliance, and that's my motion.
I'll second it.
And second it, all in favor?
Yep.
I'm gonna abstain, because I just wanna go on public record that I felt, uh, strongly, we should've tabled it, just to have them come in and discuss it, but, but I support it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I said.
That's an abstention for me.
Yes.
So we did that, so we gotta go back on to votes, maybe? Minutes, um, June fifteenth minutes?
You did that one item already, you did the first two under the votes.
Okay, so we'll go to the FYI, end of the year transfer?
Yes, so we posted, um, accounts payable and payroll today, there are two items that were short, uh, one of you, one of them you'll notice was the fire department, that at the last meeting, you transferred out of the salary line and into their expense line. Uh, turns out, there was an error on payroll, um, some of the reports are being misentered, and when the chief went through and saw it, he owed, um, the firefighters additional wages, so he ended up falling short in the salary line, so we now have to transfer back, he did have additional funds left, so, um, the other item is the Medicare tax, um, and because we have overtime and call the fire department, you never know exactly what our Medicare tax will be, and we happen to be over by eleven hundred. So this would just be two transfers to four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, and this will close out the year.
Okay, so I get a motion to accept it?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second it.
Second it, all in favor?
Aight.
Okay, we have a property use permit for the sidewalk outside Groveland Diner to raise awareness for the funds for the homeless children at the Kettlebell, Four Kids Org, Groveland Diner has also approved this request.
So this is just a property use permit, um, um, this family, the Ellis family is going to be outside on the sidewalk, they're going to raise funds, they coordinated the date with the Groveland Diner, um, it was a date that's, um, frequently visited, I guess, on Saturday morning, so, um, they would like your permission, cause it is public property.
Point of order, does the sidewalk belong to the state?
No, I think it's town.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not being flippant, I just.
It's town, there.
We don't wanna go through that process.
Correct, and, and I would just ask the board, um, Selectman Wood and I spoke about this previously, um, some of these requests, if the board is comfortable with me approving them with one selectman, so that we're not waiting two weeks to approve some smaller items like these property use, and that's something you guys could discuss. Uh, but they requested it the day of the last meeting, and it was too late to put on that agenda, so we've actually waited two weeks to get this before you, um, Selectman Wood said he'd be happy to review them, um, if the board gives them the authority to be the one, or if two people want to approve things like this, property use permits that really don't need any debate.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be in person, it could be emailed, maybe.
So that's.
Cause waiting two weeks for something like this is.
If you were to deny one of them, would've come before the full board.
Sure.
I, I think that'd be the way to go.
Sure.
Good idea.
So should we start by the, getting this one here taken care of, so, can I get a motion to accept the, um, sidewalk permit for the kettlebellkids.org in front of Groveland Diner?
I'll second that, any discussion?
I think that was the motion, he was looking for a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion, so it's simple, I made it, Joe seconded it, all in favor?
Okay, any discussion after motions?
Now we can go to the next discussion, you wanna, you.
If the board is comfortable, if I reach out to Selectman Wood, if there's any permit that neither one of us can decide on, it should come before the full board.
Good idea, great idea.
Mine with me.
Consensus of the board?
If you deny it, if you deny it and they wanna bring it before us for discussion.
Sure. Or if there's anything more complex, right, I mean, obviously, like the Groveland Day, or the, anything like that should come before the full board, but things like this, that are smaller, or.
Three hours.
Signs on the sidewalk, things like that, I don't know that it needs to come before the full board.
Okay, so maybe I'm good with, Mike's handling the sidewalks.
I am good with the sidewalks.
Yes.
Fields and sidewalks, that's what I do.
Okay, so do we have anything under, um, new and old business, we've gone through enough of that.
I got some.
Joe, go ahead.
I got two items, um, whenever it can be done, whether it's the next meeting, um, the letter that we received from the attorney regarding the, um, Dan's, um, idea on, um, on reformulating the revolving fund for the Bagnol Summer Program, maybe we can have an agenda item called, uh, Bagnol Summer Program Financing, for next meeting or the meeting after that, I would like to read the letter out, and just have a very good discussion about it. It's good information, and we got some, you know, some good, good information and good news about, uh, that letter, with one piece of it, and I won't reveal it, because it's not on the agenda tonight. Second item, whenever it can be done, hopefully this summer, we should have a discussion about the youth groups, um, I, I probably would suggest that we isolate it, uh, you know, again, like we did tonight, with the real concern, just to discuss at least initially the liability, the, excuse me, the insurance liability issues that have been raised, regarding the youth groups, uh, and, um, we just wanna make sure that we don't have any liabilities exposure, um, to the town. I wanna be very clear, this is not, uh, I have no interest in, uh, in leading any, or promoting any, uh, disbandment of, uh, five oh one Cs and some of this other scuttlebutt that's been going around town, we have a, a serious issue, we have an insurance company telling us that they might not pay certain types of claims, the way we are organized, where we have five oh one Cs operating on town property, so we need to clear that up. And I wanna make that, hopefully, an agenda, I'd like to see that as an agenda item, so that we can discuss it. If it pleases the board, there are other minor issues that we need to clear up, and I think it's very important that we have this discussion, I've been waiting a year and a half to have this on the agenda too, I'm not sure why the other board members would not support us, um, but I think this board would be very willing to have a very productive and healthy discussion about some of the technical issues we need to tweak, um, uh, so that we can continue this amazing tradition of an amazing volunteer force in this town, that has been around for sixty years.
Joe, can, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Let's just go back to the summer program letter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you said you liked.
I'd like to read it out completely, not tonight, whenever it's on the agenda.
I'm just asking, you, you mentioned that you might wanna have it on a, an agenda, um, I don't have a problem putting on an agenda item down the road, I mean, I don't want you to think you can't, so if you wanna have it on an agenda item, just let me know, and we'll get it on.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting.
I think that we started this conversation with the summer program, I think we deserve to finish it, and we deserve to figure out how we're gonna, the final outcome of the money end of it, how it's gonna be transferred, and all that good stuff, so it's resolved, so when they come back before us again, uh, you know, when they're gonna come, we have some answers for them, so I think we owe the, we owe it as an agenda item, to resolve it.
Well, that's why I'm, if I may, if I may, that's why I'm suggesting not, not make the agenda item the letter from the attorney, make the, make the agenda item Bagnol Summer Program Financing, cause I know Dan's got specific ideas, and let's, let's get that all buttoned up for next.
I did put it on the next agenda.
Oh, you can put it on?
I, I did place it on the next agenda.
Kind of expand it, so that Dan, we all have ideas, and we can, we can also, I also wanna educate the public about what that letter said.
Okay, so all I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to make sure, we are gonna have the discussion about the money, how we've got a plan on moving it, and what have, next meeting, we're gonna do it, okay, that's all.
Great.
Yes, I spoke with John Osborn on Friday, uh, told him it was not on this agenda, but it would be on the next agenda.
Okay, okay, I'll take care of that, and, and really, to reiterate again, Joe, if you're talking about youth groups and what have you, if you wanna make an agenda item, you know.
I'd like to, whenever we can accommodate, we don't have an emergency, so whenever we can do it, I don't think the next meeting's possible.
We have a few things on the next meeting, but.
So a couple down the road, I mean, get it in and out, if you wanna get it in, get it in.
Well, in fairness to people that are in the youth groups, let's be clear, so they know in advance, so they can plan on attending if they're.
Well, one of the things that I would, that I've always said, and I don't think we have enough for the elderly and the youth in this town, I think we need to have a place the youth can go, and, and I, like I had said before, I don't know if it can be done, but we have the Washington Hall, and we need to, it needs to be completed, I, it, the youth kids, I don't think need a kitchen, they could probably get away with some coolers, and they can put ice and soda in, and we could use that facility for, for a youth facility, I don't know, that could be discussed, or someplace for them to go. And then when I grew up in Beverly, we had a youth center, then you could go down there, and you could play basketball, and do what you gotta do, as well as the elderly need a place to go.
If I'm, if I may, I would suggest that'd be a separate agenda item, because, you know, my.
I'm just saying, if you wanna make an agenda item, even if it's down the road.
Yeah.
Let us know, put it on.
Okay, my, my focus is the current youth groups, and the, primarily the insurance liability issue that we need to clear up.
Okay.
And hopefully, we can clear it up.
Does anyone else have any under new or old business?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Following up on the zoning.
Yes, and I, um, the zoning bylaws, so I was gonna email you, I just talked to council this afternoon, I haven't written it up yet, um, they are, um, they've been working on it the last month heavily, they plan to go back to the planning board in the next week or two with a revised format. Once they agree, if the planning board agrees to the revised format, then they'll start working on content changes, um, they said the statute calls for, or maybe it's our bylaws, calls for any changes or amendments to the zoning. They said the statute calls for, or maybe it's our bylaws, calls for any changes or amendments to the zoning bylaws come from the planning board, not the ZBA. However, this group controls the warrant. So when those changes have to go on a warrant, it could be up to this group to solicit the ZBA or say you want the ZBA to be involved and participate in that process. The planning board will be required to hold public hearings on the changes, at which point town council would hope they would involve the ZBA. But there's nothing required to do so. But they hope in the next week or two to provide the revised format and then they'll start. He said, there's not a lot of changes, but there are inconsistencies that they need to clear up. He said it will, it's definitely on schedule for annual town meeting, but they do have some work to do.
One thing, when we originally sat down with the zoning board and the planning board, we discussed there would be public hearings, number one, and number two, that the zoning board would have some say in it, but to look at it. So I think we owe the respectful of the zoning board. See it, review it or whatever. So I'll make sure it's timed for that.
That's old business. New business, I, I would like to put on the agenda. It doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but my understanding of the Washington Hall is that it's leased out through the end of next year, if that's correct. But it's, it hasn't been used. It's next to a little basketball court. It's adjacent to the baseball field. There's a renovation of a couple hundred thousand for the park there. So I think it's a perfect location for youth recreation center. It's underutilized. And I think that should be discussed and we should ask for public comment on it to see what they want to use it for. What's the, the highest and best use of that property? My understanding is four, five hundred thousand dollars in renovations has already been paid and it, it pretty much has been sitting in mothballs. So we're not using it. There is a demand. There's also a demand for senior recreation facilities. So maybe, maybe they could share it. I know it's not ideal in terms of parking and access to it. You know, I don't know if it could be modified for you know, ADA compliance or something like that. That's not my expertise, you know, but certainly that could be looked in and if some modifications could be made that weren't cost prohibitive, we could look at that. But I, I it's just been sitting there and I've heard from a number of people that, why don't we, why don't we, you know, so why don't we?
Can, can we put on a future, not the, whenever we can fit it in, not next week, but.
Sure.
Have one of those fitted in there?
Good idea.
And it is on a lease, I believe. I gotta ask for a copy of that lease. So I mean, I don't think we can do much with it until that lease is up, correct?
I actually have never seen a lease for it, so.
I think it's leased to Historical Society.
It is.
Through next June.
I know it's the Historical Society. I don't know.
I don't know what they're doing with it. And my saying convert it to a rec hall is gonna step on their toes. But I mean, if it's not being used, we, we should have a discussion.
So why don't we ask them to come in as well?
Yep.
And have the discussion?
Yep.
And we can kind of figure that out. Okay. Does anyone else have?
Old business?
Yep, go ahead.
Could you give us a, an update on the back tack?
Sure. I don't have a specific update. The next round of the process will be taking place. I'm not sure if it'll be this week or the beginning of next, where the letters of, the official letters of advertising will go out. Those will go out and give taxpayers thirty days to make payments. If they don't make payments, they will be advertised. Has to be paid in full to stop the advertising. Once it's advertised, then they have an additional, I believe it's two weeks, and then we place a lien against their property. Some of the more significant delinquent taxpayers have come in and either paid it off or made some payments, but there's still a good number of taxes outstanding.
Can, can you estimate how much has been brought in so far?
To be honest, I don't. I haven't looked at it in the last week or two. I don't know. I can certainly send you that. We'll give it to you when you come in.
Okay, so was that under, if, under new and old business? So we'll move on and it's almost time, but not quite. So why don't we go into correspondence?
I do have an item. On.
I'm just gonna start off the talk and go down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The minutes, we got the minutes to go over from the June twenty ninth, two thousand fifteen, which we can read and bring them in next week.
Yes, if I just may, so those of you that I emailed the minutes to, there is one change you'll notice. She left a question in there and I forgot to delete it before I sent it off. It was just she didn't hear who was speaking. So for Bill and Ed, I actually gave you the hard copies. I took it out. So I'll just send you an amended version of those minutes.
Okay, Joe.
Is there anything else? I don't have it in front of me. I want to read this out.
Yep.
Discuss it. We have to, what's, the next item is what, eight o'clock?
It's now seven forty-five.
Okay, all right. So hold off. Because that, this, this item is timed.
So at seven forty-five, we have the harbor master discussion. And I think Chief Kamelwitz.
Good evening, gentlemen. Chief Kamelwitz from the police department. Mike Vets, the harbor master from Havre and the harbor master that I, name that I send over for appointment, he should be coming in any minute. Apparently, there's been some controversy with the harbor master. The way it's always been is the police chief makes the recommendation and sends it over to the board for the harbor master and any of the assistants. And we don't really have too much involvement, the police department down at, at the boat ramp and in the river, unless there's a crime, obviously, we would investigate it. So a lot of complaints have been coming in lately, not to me, but to the Havre Harbor Master about some of our assistants harassing people down in the river, the boat ramp, et cetera. So I spoke with Mike Vets, the Havre Harbor Master. He is willing to continue to be our harbor master. And I had sent over in June his name and Jack Callahan. And I guess tonight, I'm here for discussion with the board, see where you want to go. Mike also has an assistant that he's training, Brian Belfiore. Is he here tonight? And Mike, the harbor master is here. So we're here to answer any questions, to have an open discussion and see where the board wants to go with this. My main concern is the harbor master falls under public safety. So it comes under the purview of the police department. And we really need to, I think, be more involved, especially in the screening. Apparently, you have some names that have been submitted the last couple of years that haven't even crossed my desk. So we like to run background checks on these people. We want to know who's down there. And we really need to oversee it in case there is a problem. And if the board wants to continue that way, then we should work something out so it's amenable for everybody. If not, and the board wants to take it over and be in charge of the harbor master, that's fine with me. So I'm here to discuss that. Mike Vets is here as well, so.
Well, I'll start out with by saying that I've heard the same, as a chairman, I've heard the same complaints you've heard. I've been hearing that there's no one really down there that's taking charge, what have you. I know our, I call him our harbor master, has been ill. He hasn't been able to be down. He was always down there before. He's been absent only because of his condition and what have you. So I think the town people knew he was there. He was his, you know, he, he watched it and overlooked it. I would like to see that, number one, there is screening. There, there is the right people. There is the qualified people. There is people down there. If someone jumps in the water and they need to be saved, they can be saved. So I am a hundred percent what you just said. That's where I was going with it. And I think that we do need a screening process. We knew, and we need to have the right people down there. I'm not saying the volunteers that are down there aren't. I think they're doing a good job. They, they have their heart and soul into it. And we need to have that discussion. We haven't had the discussion before here. We haven't. And there's nothing wrong with a good discussion and everyone knows what's gonna happen and we all can work as a, a team and make the property a better property to go boating in. And I know we have a boat ramp coming in pretty soon. I was talking to Denise earlier. It's gonna be a modular concrete boat ramp that we put in, probably going out to bid sometime in the next few months, maybe. So hopefully that will help enhance the place as well. So. Okay. So I guess I'll move my, Mike wants to make a comment.
Yeah, I think if you make that fall on us, and we only meet every two weeks, that that's gonna put a hindrance on, one, the process, two, actual overseeing it. Much like when you go through your process of recommending a patrol officer and that whole background thing that you went with through, through the last meeting, you know what you're doing with that, right? You know what the background is for, your interview process, your whole procedural, I don't know what that is. I'm not gonna sit up here and say that since I'm a selectman, I know everything. No, I'm gonna rely on your expertise. And that's what a good person would do, to rely on people who are experts in their field to make recommendations on that. So I agree with Bill that, that going that route would be my recommendation too.
So I just want to make a statement. At the, at the last meeting when you did your appointments, there were two assistant harbor masters that, back in July first, twenty twelve, the board of selectmen started appointing. The chief was unaware of those appointments. I, I don't know the history of why they were appointed or why the board chose to appoint people that the chief was not aware of. At that time, you voted as part of your appointments not to make any changes until this evening's discussion, when you, when it took place about the harbor master. So those two assistants that were appointed through the board and not the police chief, you kind of left until tonight's discussion. So just keep that in mind.
I think, okay, here. Go ahead.
What, what I'd like to see, you know, I'm reading this letter that we, we got from Bob Shaw. And I, I think we need a point person as far as a, a person to go to, as far as the expansion, expending some of these funds that are coming out of the boat ramp. What I'd like to see is a job description for the harbor master and his jobs, job and responsibilities. In other words, what I'd like to see is a job posted with a title as a harbor master with a description of what his duties and responsibilities are. And the responsibilities, he would be the point person to go to if, if they need, they need a mooring pulled up. And somebody needs to be the leader in that. And I, I'd like to see, so I don't repeat myself. I'd just like to see a, a job posted, title harbor master. Make sure we get somebody that's, that's meets the qualifications, that is C P S trained, first responder trained also. And I think the only way to do that is if we post the job.
Dan, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to ask some questions. I mean, you mentioned that, you know, I think you were talking to the Havre Harbor Master about their position is that they're getting harassed and people. I was wondering what the nature of that was. Because I have been boating down there a couple of years, but when I went down there, it seemed like, you know, a lot of times they'd intercept. You know, no wakes, there's erosion, environmental issues, you know, boats are speeding and they just tell them no wake. So is, is that what they mean by harassment? Because that's kind of their job. So you know, you know, I've seen what goes on in the water. I mean, you could get a lot of yahoos running up and down the river and it's dangerous.
Right.
So the harbor master has to, it's like you control speeders. You drive fifty at a twenty-five, even though people in town do. And I appreciate you there. So same thing happens on the water. So it just, I ought to clarify. What are you hearing?
Well, Mike would probably be better to explain that. He's mentioned to me that he's fielded some of the complaints. Just want to add to.
Mike, you're gonna have to come up to the podium and just say who you are.
Hi, Mike Vets, Havre Harbor Master. Those complaints were from a few years back. I've just, I mean, going out of the jurisdiction a little bit, coming over the docks over in Havre, walking the docks, writing people's numbers down, not telling them why. So there was a little, you know, push and shove in the waters when it came to harbor master. And then that's when Ronnie Weeks asked me to take over, just take over the, you know, the water duties, watch over Grovel and help Cap be along. And that's what I've been doing for the last four or five years for him. I haven't been involved with, with up on the land, the docks, the moorings, who's on the waiting line, who's not.
You're more or less controlling the waterway.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think.
Which you kind of do anyways, because, I mean, the channel here runs right through the middle.
Right, right.
So if you're out there, you're out there. You're not gonna not pull them over because they're over on the Grovel and half.
Do you, do you see a problem, do you see a problem with if we had the chief, we're talking about having, having the chief, our public safety officer, you know, in charge of it, and then we had on our half, a harbor master and assistant harbor master as well as you, do you see a problem with that? I mean, you're out there anyway.
Not at all.
I just, I'm looking for someone more on the land side.
Yeah.
Than the, you know, I understand you're in the waterway. I'm looking for someone more in, in charge of the land side of it, more to say what's gonna happen with the land and
Yeah.
and, and the controlling of the, that end of it. That's where I'm trying to go with it. And, and also, I'm trying to, the dock and, and the safety of the dock and what have you. I just don't see that we've had that in the past. I think it's been, you know, like I said, I, I, I call him a good harbor master. He's done it in, for years and years as a volunteer, but and I'm not criticizing. It's just, he hasn't been there and I think this is what happened this year. He's been ill.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of fallen by the wayside and we just need to tighten it up. That's all.
You need, you need to tighten up the, the boat ramp and the, who's on the waiting list for moorings, what moorings are old, what ones are new.
And also, we need to have, you know, the, who's gonna pull them out, who's gonna take, you know, change them, have the chains good on our dock system, our chains aren't good.
Yeah.
And we need someone to inspect all that. And that's all, we need, I don't know if we, if we as a board will tell our chief to handle this, or is this?
Well, yeah, I mean, it comes down, well, once you have docks for a long time, you know how often you need to change the chains.
Right.
Which if you have electricity on the docks, it's, it's every four years.
Yeah.
Every fourth year, you need to change those chains. If not, you can't pick up the block. Now you lose the block.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments.
Denise's.
Denise, go ahead.
So I just want to state some frustrations I've had. I oversee now the boat ramp permits and the mooring permits. And I have a list of, I guess, twenty moorings and only three people, three or four people have come in and paid. I don't know if there are boats on those other moorings. I've gotten some complaints from residents that there were new docks popping up. And I know that's not something you would, I guess, see, the, of private homes. I've reached out to conservation on a few of them because it requires conservation and the harbor master. But I don't know if there's someone that I can give a list to and say, these are the permits we've granted. Are there other docks out there? Because all of those private docks are supposed to come before us.
They should be going through conservation first.
Correct, but I don't know that they are.
And then, then the harbor master approval.
Okay.
Well, I would like, if I could, I'd like to hear from Jack Callahan, because I think he had a lot of knowledge that went on down there. Do you mind coming up to speak, Jack?
Can you maybe give him a microphone?
Oh, maybe we can just give him a microphone. Do you want a microphone, Jack? We can just give.
Yeah, maybe we can just give him the microphone off the podium.
All right, what was the last question?
We're trying to find out when you last, who took care of the land, who took care of the permitting, who issued out the moorings and, and who kept on, the moorings up to date and what have you.
Well, right at this moment, Bobby's doing it.
Okay. So he has a list of who, he has a list of who currently has a mooring, doesn't?
He has a list and placement of where the boats go. And the moorings.
What, what capacity can you, as a harbor master right now, could you, could you help us out with? Could you take over the land end of it? And are you not?
Well, the fact of the matter is, always took care of the land.
Yep.
We put the porches out and the floats and the shed. And the fences. So that's what we did. Now, now I'm in no shape to do it. So I kind of laid it on Bobby Shaw, which is rotten of me. But what the heck?
Well, it's only my suggestion. I, I'm leaning toward, I'm leaning toward the public safety end of it to let the chief deal with. It's just my suggestion. And then try to find someone, a committee or someone, not even maybe a committee, I've been criticized, I like committees, but someone that would be overseeing the land end of it and, and taking care of that end of it, you know? I don't think the chief is in, he's in public safety. He's not really into the, per se, the.
Here's the thing. I don't know what you want for the public safety. We can't stop the kids from throwing rocks at you. You know that. All right? We can't stop them from piling rocks on the ramp and taking them out of the
Right.
the walls. Can't stop them from breaking the windows. I mean, they have been an absolute stinking nightmare.
Right.
There's not that much for the harbor master to do, I'm sure. I mean, you walk down to your boat, you look around and you can see the damage that's been done. I have no idea exactly where you're going with this, but putting somebody in charge of the shore is just a waste of time. If I have a, we ever had a problem down there, we call the police. And let them take care of it. And let the eleven-year-olds tell them to go F themselves. So. I'm not saying it's interesting down there. If it weren't for the children, you'd be, we're gonna stop procreating.
Yep.
So. What else do you want, bud?
I think that's good, my friend.
Had enough?
That's enough. What? What's that? You gotta come back up to the podium again. I'm sorry.
I, I remember a few years ago, you were down there and you had your camper.
Yeah.
And you were there all the time.
Yes.
You kept an eye on everything.
Well, you tried.
Yeah, I remember you jumping in your boat, going out and, you know, you did both. So.
It worked.
If it works, leave it alone, right?
Pretty much.
What's, what's broken?
Not, truthfully. Not that, truthfully, most of the money that's been spent down there, except for the initial outlay of money, has been for the repair of what the children have done for us, I mean, breaking things. Took the windshield out of the harbor master boat, they knocked a hole in the harbor master console. So, I mean, it's, that's our biggest pest down there. The boat, not that much of a problem. Okay, I'm going to go sit.
Awesome, thank you.
I hope I helped you.
Mike, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, most towns have a small harbor commission, and they meet and they come up with fees. They come up with regulations on if there's dock fees for private houses, anything else like that. So, it's not up to that one person, it's up to the committee.
That's what I was trying to head to.
Yes.
Okay. Chief, I just ask you one more question. Your role in the, down there as far as public safety, I think you're trying to get where I'm going. I'm trying to have, like he just talked about, have like a commission or something that would handle the moorings and the paperwork or whatever, and then you would do the public safety end of it.
Right, we don't.
There's not much for you to do.
Exactly, you know, the cops don't want to be down there, other than we patrol and make sure that, you know, as Jack said, sometimes we'll catch the kids doing things they shouldn't. But the police can't be down there dealing with moorings and all that stuff.
No, no, I understand that, right.
And one of the reasons that we like Mike Vets is he's directly across the river, and he's at Casmere Marina, and he can be right there if something happens. Because we have to be concerned with a rescue on the river as well. So, if we have a harbor master, we can't call someone and wait fifteen, twenty minutes for them to show up. You know, Mike's right there. That's one of the benefits of having him. But what I would like to see is someone like Mike who's there and can oversee things and have a crew that he's comfortable with. And ultimately, it would fall under public safety, as it does now.
All right, well, I've talked enough, Dan.
Does the harbor master need police training or anything? What is the nature of that position?
Yes, they have to go to, I believe it's.
They put the blues on when they come after you.
No, there's twenty-two week training.
I've been checked for flotation devices and, you know, fire extinguisher and safety issues and on a number of waterways.
Well, that's the stuff they have to know.
And if you're drunk on a boat, I mean, isn't that their job too?
Yes, then they can arrest you.
So, do they have police training?
Yes.
They do, okay.
Yes, so.
So, do you want to oversee that, police training?
I want to make sure that everyone's squared away, so we don't have liability coming back on the town and the police department. We can't have someone out there who's not a trained harbor master making an OUI arrest on a boat, when he has no right to do that.
So, you think that the harbor master ought to be a subset of the police department?
Well, it's just, it falls under the public safety. That's the way it is in most communities.
It has to be certified.
And you can supervise them.
Correct.
And that's what you want? But that's your recommendation?
Yes, see, we've been lax in that area. Jack's always done such a great job down there that we never had to worry about anything. But in his absence now, we really need to make sure we're squared away.
Let me ask you this, because I always, you know, push the button on taxes and cost and everything else, and I seem to irritate people doing that. But public safety wise, by understanding that job, pay like a thousand dollars a year or something. I mean, it's really a volunteer position. Could we still keep that structure, but have them under the supervision of the police department, or would they fall into union? And would that drag it into a whole other cost structure, is what I'm asking you.
No, currently, there's a thousand dollars in the budget for expenses. And I would like to see the harbor master continue to have access to that for fuel, chains, moorings, whatever they need. But I would also like to see some type of a salary stipend. I believe the harbor master in Haville gets approximately eighteen thousand a year. Obviously, we couldn't pay anything close to that, but if we're going to have somebody that's responsible, they really should get something. But I don't think you have to deal with unions or contracts, it's.
It's a part-time position, it would fall under that. So, you could have the oversight, would get the safety and benefit there.
Right, make sure their certificates are up to date.
Right, you had supervisor make sure they're qualified and they're capable of doing the job, so there's nothing that slips through the cracks. Then we could talk about how much money it would cost.
Right, you know, I've been told.
I think that's reasonable. I don't know what the board needs to do to make it happen, but.
Now, one thing I have heard is one of the assistants is walking around down there with a firearm. You know, we don't even know what they wear for uniforms, if they're able to be distinguished from civilians. There's a lot of things that need to be tightened up.
Well, I think the first thing that we need to tighten up is we need to get someone down there that actually knows they're in charge. And then there's a second in command or whatever, that's what, and we also need someone to overlook them, that's my opinion.
It should be, it should be in uniform, don't worry.
At least a polo shirt with some type of an insignia.
And the thing that struck me funny is, and I know Mike's across the river, and I know Mike is good at what he does, but we don't even have a, anyway, if there was someone of our guys down there, we don't have a boat right now, they could even jump in and go. There's nothing down there for them.
And that's one of the benefits of having Mike.
Right, I understand, I clearly understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And even if Mike still had, still did what he did, which I'm in favor of, and I agree with you saying, you can't put a guy and wait fifteen minutes for someone to drown out there. He could be there and gone. I agree with you saying, but I'd also like to see something that, once we get this in place, our person had something they could go, if they needed to go out and do. I think it was Mr. Callahan's personal boat that he used.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
What?
No, you used your boat as a voluntary basis down there, it was your boat, yeah.
Twenty years, well.
Right, right, thank you.
Yes, so we don't own a boat.
And it was only used for one rescue. And that was Jimmy, whose, that was a last name, I can't remember, who fell off his boat. His feet, if he'd have put his feet down, he would have touched bottom. Other than that, rescue from a boat ashore, I rest a glass of thicken already in the water, he'd waste me time.
Okay, can I ask one follow-up question?
If we didn't have our own boat, what would be your recommendation? That we use Haville's facilities and what would that mean to us? We would have to share costs, or what does that mean to us?
Well, Mike could answer that better, but he's still, I mean, he's willing to help out, use their equipment, and as long as we can give him some expense money for fuel and whatever.
A nominal charge, and we could have a mutual aid agreement or something, is that, I don't.
Yes.
Along those lines?
Correct.
So, maybe, do we hear from him a little more?
Yeah, sure, Mike.
And I know Mike stated to me that he has a mooring, a boat that has the mooring removal that we could use and our boaters could use as well.
Yeah, I mean, nothing is going to change in what's been going on for the last five years.
You were responsible for calls from this side of the river, what would that mean to you and what would that cost to take on that responsibility?
Nothing, because I do it anyways. I mean, Grovel's called me a handful of times in the last handful of years, and I just go and do it.
Okay.
See, and as far as the training goes, you can't enforce the laws of Massachusetts unless you go through the harbor master schooling, which is given by the North Shore Harbor Master Association.
A certification for that.
Yes, which is a five-year program.
Mike, are you going to be addressing some of these things, locating lost moorings? You going to be doing that?
I can.
Are you going to be replacing the chain on the moorings? Maybe we ought to hear from Bobby Shaw.
Yeah, in an ideal world, I mean, if you had somebody on the shoreline, running the shoreline, and, you know, keeping track of the moorings, which ones are old, which ones are newer. Because, you know, being on the water, you don't have time for all that.
Right, I understand. Okay, so maybe we can hear from Bob Shaw at this point? He's submitted this.
Hi.
Bob, how you doing?
Pretty well.
Good.
I'm just a volunteer down there. I've been a boater, and probably, I was trying to figure out when I first started down there, I'm saying, it's also fifteen years ago. And I've always helped if someone was backing their boat in and they needed help, I offer help. And now Ben and I have taken over basically moving moorings, bringing them in. And it's a maintenance thing, and that's all I've learned all my life, where I worked for S.D.s and lawnmower business my dad had, preventive maintenance. And that's all we're trying to do, taking the worst thing, if the boat's not on it right now, it's not a precedent, you know, we don't have to hurry on that. And we do what we can when the tides are right and when Ben and I have time, and we're using our boat to do it. And we used to get gas money, that was the only thing we ever got, you know?
All right, do you have anything else to say?
No.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Okay, and I don't mind helping, it's just, you know, it's what I do.
Billy, did he answer your questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure if I.
He did, he did. All right, okay. Well, what I would like to, we're on the subject pretty long now. I would like to see that the current situation down there stays the same with our police department taking care of the public safety end of things. And I would like to create, if we could, some kind of a commission that the Haville Harbor Master has asked, that we can get, a group down there that knows who's in charge, who's second in command, and they would be handling the, I call it the land side use of the property. So, I don't know how we go about finding that or getting a committee, or if we have the people that are already down there working, if they can have a meeting with the chief, or try and put something together and come back, table this for tonight, and maybe you could head that up for us and see what we can put together? I don't know, I want to hear from my other board members here.
In addition.
I think if they gave us a proposal, we could review it, and then we could have something to vote on with the details of what.
I think it's just semantics right now, they're already doing it, so it's just a matter of making them official, which shouldn't be all that difficult.
Yeah, I still want to see a job description and what the harbor master's duties and responsibilities are, so that he can be pinned down. If he's not doing something, we can pick him up on it. If he's supposed to be pulling the lost moorings, checking on them, and he's not doing it, we don't want him to come back and, well, that's not my job. I want to see something in writing, can you come up with something in writing? And just so that we, as the board, know what he's supposed to be doing down there? Absolutely, and if you like the crew that's down there now, then I would suggest that they would answer to the harbor master. And, because he's the one that knows what they're doing. We don't know about moorings and chains and all that stuff.
I understand, right. Mike, would you be willing to have a meeting who's down there now and try to, would you be able to work with who's down there? Try and get someone, get a chain of command going down there? If you're going to be the harbor master, we vote to leave you the harbor master?
Yeah.
Just to try and get some, so if someone goes up with their boat, they know they're talking to the harbor master, the assistant harbor master, you know what I mean?
I'll even sit on the commission, I'll be a non-voting member and just sit on the commission, I can just advise.
Right, yeah, that's what I would like to see to do. Anyone else got anything they want to say?
Just Mike's last comments may not have come through because he wasn't at the mic. So, what did he say?
I guess you got to go to the mic.
Just so the folks at home can hear you.
What question did you?
Just the very end, that you would be willing to sit on the commission?
Yeah, the harbor commission as a non-voting member, just to advise.
Great.
On what's going on in the water and who's doing what.
And you'd head it up as far as trying to get the guys in order and what happened?
Yeah, there's also ways to generate a little bit of money. You know, with boat stickers and dock permits and all that stuff.
You know, that's what I think we need, we need a little direction.
We do have that now. We do sell, twenty-five dollars gets you a sticker and a key to the boat ramp. So, we do have that.
And moorings are a hundred.
Moorings are a hundred, and we do have private boat ramps that vary depending on what they need to do.
Again, public relations is good, and the more people hear about it, they know about it, they're going to go down there, they're going to use it.
Oh, yes.
And the place is being renovated, and the boat ramp's going to be renovated, so it's only going to be better for everyone. So, I think now's the right time to put this together and try to get it all organized. Maybe you guys can use this facility here to have a meeting one night with the guys and talk it all out. Hopefully, we can put something together, and we can table it for tonight and come back at a later date and meet us, and we can put it together. And we'll leave it the way it is. I say we leave it the way it is, let the calls come into the chief, and he'll call you, you'll handle the waterway for the time being.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we leave it the way it is for the time being, leaving the Haville Harbor Master in charge. He will handle the waterways for the time being, it's going to be tabled, and he'll come back to us with a committee, hopefully, a formed committee.
I'll second it.
Seconding?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Sorry, just a point of order, are you tabling the item or are you making a motion to retain the arrangement as is?
Nope, I'm making a motion that it's going to be tabled, but I'm only asking so we have something in place, that the Haville Harbor Master will continue what he's doing, his role with the town of Grovel, but the rest of the discussion will be tabled until he has a chance to form a committee or alliance or whatever he needs to do, discussion maybe, with the group of guys.
Thank you, I'm clear on that now.
Okay.
Motion on the floor.
Water. Are you giving them a certain time limit to come back?
I mean, I don't want to, we can get it done in a month, you think?
A couple of weeks.
Okay, so, we'll say within a couple of weeks, so we can contact Denise, we'll get you on the agenda, we'll have you come back in.
Yep, okay.
That'd be great. Okay. Any, any, any discussion, Dan, you good?
I second it, I was the first time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming in, everyone.
Adamus?
Sure.
Should Ben and I continue?
I'll go up to the.
Yeah, I just wondered if Ben and I should continue what we're doing through the process.
Yeah, just if you can go down there and do what you're doing, but understand, you might want to tell the people we're working on it, we're going to, we're all going to get some point of order down there. But, yeah, please be a volunteer, please put in what you're doing and.
And I can still bring the receipts to Denise and I can be reimbursed.
Definitely, you're not changing anything, we're just going to try and improve it, that's all we're trying to do.
All right.
Yeah, and thank you for your time, everyone that's involved down there.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have other volunteers here.
Yeah, I'm sure you do, thank you. Okay. So. So, we're going back to the correspondence?
Yeah, just tell me when this comes up.
Yeah, go ahead, you can do it now, Joe, we're all set.
All right, I'm going to wait so that we don't have a disruption. I'm doing this next.
I can hear you. Yep, that's next on the correspondents. And I had spoken to him and told him that it was just correspondence tonight, and if the board wanted it to come before, I would let him know if it was going to be an agenda item, just so you know.
I'm just going to kind of present it, certainly not ask for a vote or anything.
Okay, Joe.
This is a correspondence item, it's an interesting and actually wonderful idea. And I value your opinion, and this is not an item that we can vote on tonight, but I value your opinion. Mr. Dole, James Dole of Optech Road, has made a recommendation that the Elmer Bagnall School, the new addition, is named in honor of Mr. Beaton. So, I promised to do this in about three and a half, four minutes or so. Let me give you a little bit of background and my suggestions, and then I need your opinion. My experience with renaming public buildings, I've had two of them, one on the school committee and one recently here in Groveland. The renaming of the Groveland Bridge was a complex procedure. The way it happened was that the city council in Haville endorsed the idea that was presented to them by a group of veterans. That endorsement was just that, it didn't have any legal effect, because the building, excuse me, the bridge is owned by the state. Haville does not have jurisdiction over the Groveland Bridge, and Groveland doesn't have jurisdiction over the Groveland Bridge. Then they came over, the veterans over to this side of the river, and they asked the Board of Selectmen to do the same thing. We overwhelmingly endorsed the idea of renaming the bridge, the Groveland Bridge. And that was the ceremonial piece, if you will, the endorsement piece. Now, the veterans approached Senator Tar, and Senator Tar created legislation, and he initiated the process of getting it approved by the state legislator. So, when you have a renaming of a building in both experiences, you have basically three components. You have the endorsement or the ceremonial, then you have the sponsor, and then you have the legislative authority that affects it. So, now, fast forward, here we are in Groveland, we have a building called the Bagnall School. The Bagnall School is run by Pennsyltucket Regional District, but the building itself is owned by the town. So, there's a couple of different approaches that we can take. Theoretically, the Board of Selectmen has control over the properties. So, we could decide on our own to vote to rename a building in honor of someone. And I would guess that if we took that route, obviously, we probably want to have public hearings, so some input from the town. The other thing, which is a little bit more complicated, might also work, and that's why I need your opinion. We could take Mr. Dole's suggestion, that's the endorsement component, and then we, as a board, we vote to have it as a warrant article, and then we leave it to the legislative authority called Town Hall to make the decision next year, okay? Both process, the one process that I did go through in the school committee was very uncomfortable, because, you know, we're talking about someone and someone's memory and a family. So, we have to be, we have to have an abundance of civility and respect. And I would guess, particularly with this individual, I'm going to read the letter, that there's going to be significant support. But those are the two mechanisms that I can think of. We either have the Board of Selectmen make the decision with a public hearing component, or we have the, Mr. Dole's. or we have the Mr. Dole's idea as the endorser. We become the sponsor by creating a warrant, and we put it at town meeting for people to have a healthy discussion as to why the building should be renamed and the merits of that. I will read the letter if you'll permit me.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before you read it? Is he asking to rename Bagnall School?
No, just, yeah, just the addition.
Or just the gym?
Exactly, just the addition.
Okay. So, you'd have a sign that says this is...
It's a plaque.
Beaton Hall or something like that.
Exactly, exactly. "I am submitting a proposal," this is from James Dole, forty-six Optec Road, Groveland, Mass. "I am submitting a proposal to the Board of Selectmen that the new addition to the Elmer S. Bagnall School be named in honor of Donald R. Beaton. Donald served the town of Groveland and in particular our school system for a number of years, and I feel it is fitting that the town recognize his contributions. Donald dedicated his life to the local community. He served as a member of both the Groveland and Penn Tucket School Committees for a number of years and was instrumental in the construction of the current school while serving on the Dr. Elmer S. Bagnall School Building Committee. He was committed to bettering other lives, serving as a director of the Family Bank, Bethany Homes, Havil Daycare Center, Pennacook Place, Northern Elder Transport, and a trustee of the Havil YWCA for over thirty years. He was as assistant professor at Merrimack College, where he also co-chaired the college's capital improvement drive to construct a new gymnasium and infirmary. He was a past president of the Greater Havil Chamber of Commerce and a chairman of the Groveland Finance Committee for many years. His contributions were recognized by a number of organizations, and he was a recipient of the Boy Scouts of America Distinguished Citizen Award, the Benai Birth Distinguished Service Award, Merrimack College Alumni of the Year Award, Greater Havil Chamber of Commerce Award for Significant Contribution, and a Rotary International Paul Harris Fellow." And Mr. Dole concludes, "Donald lived his life to help others, and those of us who had the privilege to know him were better people because of it. He is a model for the future generations that will pass through the school, and his life is a lesson for each of us in true civic commitment. Donald's contributions and sacrifices should be acknowledged and honored so that they are never forgotten. Respectfully submitted, James A. M. Dole." I'll open it to the floor for discussion.
Again.
A well-written, a well-written piece. I think that if we're going to do something like this, Joe, I think the first thing to do, if you're going to name a part of a building, the new addition, generally, familiar with naming portions of a building, like a library or a gymnasium, generally, that person has contributed a good sum of money towards the construction of that particular wing. And there may, not taking anything away from Don Beaton, because he's certainly very dedicated, and so is the family, but if you're going to decide to name the addition, maybe it should be put out to other people, maybe there's other deserving people that we could take names for also. I mean, we're just, I think we, if we're going to do that, that's what should be done.
I agree with what Ed said. There could be other deserving people in the town, so if we're going to do it, I think we deserve, get names and what have you, and if we're going to do it, if we vote to do it, we should have more than one name, we should have a bunch of names. I'm sure there's other people in town that would want to put the name in on it, so I'm agreeing with that.
Well, I mean, you could have this wing is this person, recognition of what he's done over the past thirty years in Groveland. The gym is named after this person, the new cafeteria is named after this person, I mean, you could do a bunch of different things.
Well, thank you. It's not my project. I wanted to bring it forward because of my experience on the two mechanisms that are possible on how to name it. Now, if we have a period of time where we solicit to the public other names, then we can, we still have to address, well, how do we do it? Does it become a Board of Selectmen meeting, or do we present it to town meeting? It's a very sensitive issue, so, and I don't have an answer.
I don't need that.
So, Dan, I think you had some...
Want me to weigh in on it?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure.
Well, I know one name that won't be named after, probably mine.
Other structures will be, though.
I'm right along with you.
I'm sure.
Unfortunately.
We have a well-deserving person right here in the audience, sitting right next to Michael there.
When we convert from septic to sewer, we'll talk about it. No, probably what should happen is, I think we maybe have a timeline. We say, you know what? I'll just throw it out there, brainstorm, but you know, within the next ninety days, anybody that has a, you know, a colleague that needs recognition, or somebody that worked at the Bagnall that above and beyond, somebody, you know, somebody needs to be recognized, they could submit that person's name in a cover letter, a letter of, you know, recommendation, this person was outstanding to the community, and then we can weigh in on it. And I don't know, I mean, you just, it's one thing that's kind of, would certainly be polarization, but I think you simply have to put it to a vote. You know, you may have five outstanding people in the community, and they might be all great candidates, but how do you pick one over the other, and then you alienate the other people you don't choose? So, there has to be some process that's sensitive to that, so. I think if you could, people could submit names over a period of time, I think we could look at them, but if you get a hundred, it's a popular vote to some degree. If we get a hundred of them that say this is the guy, then five others, then I think you get your answer.
I like...
How else to do it? I just haven't done it before.
Your idea, we'll have Denise weigh in, because I'm sure you've had some experience as well, I'm guessing, naming of buildings, but, all right, well, let me yield the floor to the finance director.
I was just going to say, I could certainly put something on our website, and if there's multiple names, you know, we could put a survey on the website and let residents go in and vote if you wanted to narrow it down and give the residents a chance to weigh in. You could certainly do something like that.
Right. Are we actually trying to name this wing?
I guess that's up to you guys to decide.
The cafeteria, is that what we're talking about?
The new addition.
The new addition, yeah.
Yes. So, I guess it's the cafeteria and the gym.
There'll be, I would guess, I mean, there'll be a plaque affixed, and there'll be a ceremony.
It's the Bagnall School. I mean, you can't change the Bagnall, I mean, it's like...
I kind of feel it's history, too. But if the Bagnall School wing, I guess...
The Bagnall School has a new annex that is named in honor of a person. So, Dan...
I just think you'd call it the, you know, you know, person's name auditorium or something. It's a cafeteria is what it is. I mean, I think that's what they label it.
We can think of a name. So, Dan, I like your idea. I don't know, ninety days is enough, but so...
It's a process. I mean, we could review it before town meeting.
Yeah, that's true. Oh, that's right.
I'd like to use his idea better.
I have a question for Dan. So, whether we have one name or five names, what's your thinking? Do you feel comfortable that there should be only a Board of Selectmen meeting, excuse me, Board of Selectmen decision, or should we take it to the town? What's your thought on that? What's your gut feeling say?
I think we should take it to the town, because, you know, I...
People's choice?
I think it's the people's choice.
Yeah, I tend to agree.
You know, the people would know these people. If I don't know them, it's kind of like, I feel in an awkward position to say, we're going to, maybe I bow out of it, abstain. If I, if the person served for a thirty-year period and I never knew them, I defer to other people that maybe they ought to be recognized. To me, it's hearsay in a lot of ways, because I don't know the person.
Okay. Good.
So, do you want to let Denise put on the website and try to find some names, or how does the board want to do it?
They could submit to Denise.
Yeah, I mean, I could just put on the website if they know a deserving citizen they'd like to recognize for this, submit it to me, and I'll bring it to the board. I'll compile them and bring them to the board.
How about asking a question prior to that? If this is something that they want to do, why do they want to just leave it the Bagnall School without naming a wing? Get their feelings on that, too.
I can, if that's what you all would like.
Pardon, copy. On the website.
I'm okay with recognizing the hall. I mean, you know, it's like college, you get twenty buildings, you get twenty different names. I'm okay with that. There's enough people that have served the town that can be recognized without changing the Bagnall Elementary School name, which is historical to a lot of people.
What would you like for a timeframe?
Should we do both in ninety days?
I think ninety days is plenty.
Ninety days, we have Ed's idea also as a separate question.
So, do you want me to, I mean, you want me to ask both questions?
I think we should.
Yeah, I think we should. There's no rush to get something developed and placked up tomorrow, so let's take some...
Throw it out there, see what you get for a response.
We don't have to do it in ninety days, we could just...
And we're looking at just the auditorium cafeteria space?
That's right, that's right. I, according to this letter, again, this is not my proposal.
Right, well, it said the new addition. I wasn't sure if the gym was part of the new addition, or if we're just talking that one building. I just want to make sure I...
Where we have the town...
Okay, so just that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so are we good to move to the next item?
There's more?
What's that?
There's more? I haven't looked at it. That's good. I didn't know there was more.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
So, we have a letter...
It's really, that's just, that's just for your information, yes.
Okay, and then we have a letter from Brandolini Construction regarding the snow pollen bill.
Can we discuss that?
Did you want to discuss it, Joe?
Well, okay, it's a public document. We're being threatened with litigation for not paying the bill to remove the snow from the roof. I'd like to, I'd just like to hear from the board. I did advocate prior that, not for anything other than just a set of events, that we should have paid the bill. What the letter cites, so the public is aware, what the letter cites is that the other two towns hired Brandolini before we did. And so, with limited staff that he had, and correct me if I'm wrong, by the time they came to us, a lot of them would be going into overtime. And so, he gave us an estimate of forty to sixty dollars, but he did tell us on two occasions that it would probably be on the higher end. And that's what happened. We got stuck with a very high bill for removing the snow from the roof. You may remember, I was very critical of the superintendent for causing that problem, but now it's our problem, it's our bill. And my gut feeling says that we should pay the bill. That's what I said before, and that's how I feel now. But again, I will support the board, you know, without prejudice, without bias. Whatever you decide, I'll go with. I'll be the last to vote.
Well, it's not a voting item, it's just correspondence this evening, so you can discuss it, and if we want to put it on an extra agenda, you certainly...
Right, not to vote tonight, but at some point, going to have to.
Go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, I was reading it. Go ahead.
I can talk. I read the letter, and it talks about overtime, and we had asked, we had a reasonable request for payroll records to show, to verify, to prove that, in fact, they were all overtime hours. So, we haven't received anything to validate it, so at this point, I remain professionally skeptical that all of the hours were, in fact, OT at that higher sixty-dollar-an-hour rate. So, you know, if it ends up in litigation, and there's something called discovery, and all relevant information is discoverable, so they would be forced in that context to produce those records. So, I don't know why they feel that we're forcing their hand, we're going to get them anyway if push comes to shove. And if they can prove that they were, in fact, all overtime hours, then it may very well be that we're stuck with the bill. But the fact that they won't substantiate those overtime hours, I can only be skeptical, and I say that the town should not pay the bill without the proof. So, I think we continue our course, and the burden of proof is on the moving party, and that would be them.
Okay. Mike wants to say something.
Wasn't there a discussion on this about, you were down there several other days, and there was only two or three guys kind of standing around? I don't know for how, what the amount of time was, but they were standing around for X amount of time down by the trucks. You couldn't see how many people were up on the roof.
No.
So, like was just stated, if they can't produce the hours and they're overtime hours, I mean, why would I pay? It's like when you get a bill from the insurance. I'm not just going to pay it. Tell me why I have to pay it, because I pay a monthly premium, I pay this, pay that, so... Why would I pay it just on your word that that's the bill, without being able to prove that that is the hours?
Okay, so, I'm going to go back to what I originally said, and I don't, didn't have the conversation with them originally, but it was never transferred into me that it was going to be paid because of overtime. And if it was going to be paid and had to be paid because of overtime wages, we should have been duly notified in the beginning that this was going to be a high bill because the guys were going up on the roof on overtime. Furthermore, here on there, we asked for the documents, as Mr. Selectman McDonald stated, they didn't produce the documents, and we've asked for them twice, they didn't produce them. I don't want to pay the bill myself until we have those documents and we have more proof who was there, like Mr. Wood, the Selectman Wood you said. How many people are on the roof? You know, payroll records, proof. I mean, I feel confident that they haven't done their due diligence in supporting the paperwork. It's like me going out and doing a job and going up to someone and saying, I'm going to do the job, and submitting the bill at the end, and saying, I want the money, and that's it, and I don't give them any explanation. I don't think I get the money. So, I'm confident in how I've stood, and I'm going to stay standing.
And I concur with Dan, with Bill and Mike. We asked for information, I think the last letter that we had from them indicated that the reason for the, that it would be on the high end is because they were tired, and there was no mention, I don't remember any mention of overtime. But just as a question to Bill, now, you go out on, you go out on several jobs, and you can't go out on a Saturday after your guys have worked forty hours and go to a customer and say, you have to pay my guys time and a half because they've worked over the forty hours.
No.
It's just mind-boggling to me that they...
On a different job.
On a different job, exactly. And that's what this was.
And the biggest thing, Ed, is that I don't think this is a binding contract. I could be wrong, but I don't believe this is a binding contract. There was no contract, there was nothing signed and signatured. It's word of mouth, as far as I can see it, but, I mean, that's just my opinion. It's not a contract, and it was not a contract.
And maybe, maybe Dan can help with this, and I'm not an attorney, but we did pay part of the bill, and that could be construed that there was an agreement, even though the agreement was made verbally. The payment of a partial bill, which is now in dispute, creates, I think, the evidence that there was an agreement. See, a written agreement is just evidence of an agreement. So, okay, we had a verbal agreement, but then we decided on paying something less than they wanted, so now by paying a portion of the bill, in fact, we've created a document that says there must have been an agreement there. I'm not an attorney, I'm just stating that. And again, I'm not fighting the board at all, I just...
The way I see it, the, the, the issue and controversy is the differential in the twenty dollars an hour. So, yes, they were hired to remove snow. What they haven't met their burden of proof on is establishing that they were a hundred percent overtime hours. So, they could get the flat rate, the minimum, but they're not gonna get the maximum without more. And so, that's how I see it. So, yeah, I believe Denise said they were hired to go remove the snow. Could have been right in to clarify things, but it seemed to be there was somewhat of an urgency. I don't know if it was an emergency, but you never know. I mean, if you had to remove it timely with the roof had collapsed, y- you never know. I don't know how many ships wound up in the rocks till you get rid of the lighthouse, so you find out. But, so, wha- whatever, we can't unring that bell. They were hired to remove snow, and now the dispute is, at what rate will they be paid? Because they gave us a range, and we're saying it should be at the low range, not the high range. And if you want the high range, show me that you guys worked under the state law overtime, whether or not they needed to work more than forty hours, or more than eight hours in a day. Whatever the statute requires, they need to prove that tho- those guys on the job at the bag now are entitled to overtime pay. In fact, the town, I would want to make sure that the employees actually got the overtime. And without the paychecks, how do you know the owner of the business didn't get the differential and the employees get flat rate pay? So, you know what, I'm comfortable with our position that if, you know, they can send us a demand letter, but I've seen hundreds of them, and my history is being a lawyer since two thousand and three. And you know what, you gotta prove it, you need the burden of proof, he's on board. They haven't met their burden. So you know what, I think we sit on our hands, as I said at the last meeting, and let them prove it, or they got paid the forty, we didn't stiff them. Okay, you know?
Yeah.
And we want more, or they're not getting more.
We can't vote on it tonight, but.
Do, do you want a response? Do you want either the board or town council to send a response to this?
The response should be, they need to prove that all of those hours were at an overtime rate, and that they, in fact, paid those workers at an overtime rate.
It's interesting that they went right from forty to the top end, not even halfway, or fifty-two, fifty-one.
Right, well, and I think.
Not, not one hour was regular pay.
Right, and I think, Mike, you may have missed the very first meeting, we talked about this. Uh, part of the issue was, I had met him, the school shut down because of the snow on the roof. I met him, I asked him for an estimate, he said he couldn't get one until he got on the roof. It was the Thursday morning, I believe. He called on Monday and said the job was done. I said, what do you mean the job was done? You didn't even give me an estimate. And then Bill said he happened to be driving by, saw seven guys hanging out in a truck. Then they sent us a list saying that there was thirty-some odd guys there.
Right.
Bill knew from experience from the other schools, it was half the number of guys, half the number of hours. The schools were the same size, so then we started questioning why we had so many guys, why the hours were so high, and why the rate was so high.
But, but also, he sent us, originally, he sent us for office help, he sent us for fuel, he sent us transportation. That was all backed out immediately, because the other schools wouldn't pay that. They backed out, so he backed it out on us. But my question to you, as you just answered one of my questions, was, they never called you and said, we're starting the roof?
Correct.
They went and did it without a phone call, they went and started it, you get it.
He said, I have to see what I have for guys, I have the other jobs going on.
Did he ever call you and say the roof was completed?
I actually don't think so. I think it was Bobby Aracalian who called me Monday morning and said, the railings are all damaged, because they took the snow off and dumped the root, the snow on the railings.
Right, so.
So maybe we could charge them for twenty-five thousand dollars for the railings.
When was the check cut?
Um, it was not that long ago. I think we cut, actually, there's a copy of it in here, so. It wasn't that long ago that we cut the check.
Because we kept as a board, the old board kept talking about it.
April twenty-third, the check was cut.
So that was the prior board?
Right, right.
That did that?
Right.
So.
Uh, yes.
To answer, Joe, I don't know if I answered your question, but.
You did.
You may have a contract, but you still can argue the.
Okay.
The terms of.
And.
What, wha- what it is you agreed on.
And, and the payment, to me, is good faith.
Okay.
The payment's good faith, that's just a good faith payment. And we did pay the payment, am I correct when I say this? And we asked at that point, could you please give us the payroll records?
Correct.
And he sent us a bill showing that he had a subcontractor of a subcontractor, you know.
Yeah, they sent us just a list of.
Different people he paid.
People, correct.
Not his company. Brandolini paid another company, which paid another company, not individual people. He did list, give us a list of people.
Right.
Which I said, you could have went in the telephone book and got those names.
Right.
With a rate of pay, but there was no backing up on it, right.
Joe, is, if they were to file a formal complaint, we could certainly consider, with town council, of course, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not the town's lawyer, a counterclaim, okay, to assert maybe that the amount we had already paid is in dispute, and that we want justification for what we were built. So, sometimes the best defense is a good offense in a legal context, so is it a shield or a sword? So you know what, if they wanna go there, we want all the records, and we'll challenge the underlying, uh, thirty-eight thousand dollar payment and question that's, it's validity as well. So, I mean, that's, that's how I would approach it, but I'm just one of five.
Yeah, just two things. The risk for us is to pay the bill with accruing interest, and then potentially court fees and, um, attorney's fees, however.
If you unilaterally ask for the accruing.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Uh, uh, the, under the law, they would have to, from the date they filed the complaint, if they were to prevail, they'd get statutory interest. They just can't self-help themselves to add interest.
That letter did not make that clear, and I knew that, I knew that.
There was an oral agreement.
Right.
To do something, and some of the material terms are in dispute. So that, it's, it's unilateral on their part to say, oh, we want interest.
I'm not a.
I, I just want to finish.
I'm not an attorney, but if someone went up on a roof and cleared off a roof when they were supposed to be getting a number together, and then called and said it's done, did they even get the right wording, or the right authorization to go up there and shovel that roof off? That's my.
Well, and I, he was supposed to provide insurance certificates. I didn't get that till weeks later.
Right.
Because they had, they had done the job.
Right.
And then I got the insurance certificate faxed to me.
They really never got clear justification to go up on that roof and shovel it. That's why I'm gonna stick where I am. I'm sticking, I, I say, don't even, I say, ignore the letter. That's me. I say, ignore it and see where they're gonna go. Let them spend the money, and why should we spend the money? Why should we call town council? Just, we got the letter, thank you, and, and I say, sit on it. You know, sometimes you don't answer someone, and, uh, go ahead, Joe.
I, um, the, what Dan has asked for in terms of proof, I, I did misread the file. I thought all of that information of who they paid was sufficient to prove what they charged. So, just, uh, so I'm, I'm on record, this is why, you know, this is sometimes good discussion. My dissent is removed, and if we are going to pursue a path, including asking for town council for an opinion, I, I will support the board in, by vote, form and substance, my dissent is removed on this issue. I'm with you.
Yes, we asked them for actual certified payroll records, and they, they gave us a spreadsheet with some names on it.
Names, and he got a guy on the telephone book, and then he gave us, he gave us amount of money that he paid each company. There was a couple of companies he had, he had wrote in checks, so big checks.
He said like nine subcontractors or something, but he just listed a number, nine.
He took the people, and then each company supplied him with, with people, I believe, and then.
That's what tripped me up.
How he accumulated his number, but it wasn't what we were looking for, at any rate. So, I, I, I'm gonna stick with what I said, we won't have to beat this anymore. I say, leave it alone, let it sit, and see what happens with it. I don't wanna see spending any money on it in town council, and it happens, so.
That's, that's the best course of action.
Sometimes something, something not, something less said is better off.
So, and so we're not gonna ask for a response from the town?
I say, leave, it's just me, I'm just, I'm not, I'm speaking.
Well, I think we have, we don't need a vote, I think we have consensus, and that's good. And it's unanimous consensus.
You go with that?
I think we, if they wanna, uh, take the next step, they can file a complaint.
Okay, Mike?
They file a complaint, we'll send it to town council.
Yeah, I, I, absolutely.
With the consensus, okay, and we'll leave it alone.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have, um, correspondence regarding the planning board matter.
Yeah, so you guys were just CC'd, um, it's a letter regarding Groveland Fairways that went to the planning board, and they CC'd the board, so it's just a copy for your information.
And that's regarding, um, down on the Fairways Drive?
Yes.
And it's just with the property owners that are having, trying to get things taken care of?
Yes.
Okay. I've gotten a couple complaints, and I know there was an issue before with the hot topping of, um, Seven Star Road. Is that part of him, is that part of his, um, he has to pa- repair that Seven Star Road as part of that project?
At the intersection of Fairways and Seven Star, like that area?
Yeah, he went down, I think they had to go down and get a pipe.
I believe so, yes.
Because I've gotten a, a few people called and wanted to actually have me bring it up at a meeting, and I said, I can't really bring it up, because, and, you know, I come on in, but no one seems to come in, so. As long as, you know, maybe the people out there hearing that it will be taken care of, hopefully.
Right, and, and this letter, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read it, it's more about, um, planning board members are contacting homeowners to find out if there are violations, instead of waiting to see if homeowners come to the planning board with violations. They're claiming that planning board members are actually seeking out opinions from homeowners about what's being done and not done, and that's violating, um, the builders' rights under the town bylaws, rules and regulations, so.
Hmm, okay.
Just so you know.
All right. So we're gonna move on to finance director time?
Yes, and I actually don't have anything this evening.
Okay.
Unless anyone has any questions for me, I don't have anything.
Um, Ed Watson had asked a question about the taxes, did, did we answer that?
Yep.
To his satisfaction?
Ed, were you satisfied with my response on the taxes?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, Sleckman's time. Does anyone have any?
I got, I got, I got two issues. Uh, one, uh, ag- again, concerns the, the cable TV. Cable TV was out for about four days this past week, I believe, this past week. And, uh, I had to make some calls, it got straightened out. But this seems like it's, it's an every couple week occurrence. I, I, I think we need to get Chris in here again, find out what's going on, and, uh, and I, and I also think that the cable TV committee ought to be, ought to be involved. I know I just came on board in the last meeting. Uh, find out what's going on, why does it keep going out, and why isn't anybody monitoring it? And, uh, find out what is, what is Chris's duties and responsibilities? And I, and I checked with Denise, and we, we don't have a job description for this person. Uh, he, he's a salaried, or an hourly, uh, salaried employee for the town of Groveland, I think he's under nineteen hours a week. Uh, but what is he supposed to do? How many hours does he put in, and, and where is he? Is he, is he in here at town hall? Uh, what, what is, what is his duties and responsibilities? And I, I think we should, uh, get him in here and, and find out, why was this cable TV out for four days, and why wasn't he monitoring it?
So, do you wanna make that an agenda item?
I, I, I do, and, and maybe, I know the next meeting is, is a full media, full agenda, maybe, uh, the meeting after.
Couple after that meeting?
That's fine.
Okay.
So, like, the first August meeting, maybe?
First of August?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Uh, second item I have, I, I, I had somebody, uh, make a complaint to me about, uh, dead sports, uh, dead sports, dead spots in the town for, uh, cell phones and, uh, the two-way radios. And, and a couple of the spots that were mentioned to me were, uh, Seven Star Road, and, uh, somewhere in the vicinity of Main Street and Seven Star Road. And, uh, that, that kinda concerned me, and, uh, I, I wish the, the police chief had stayed. But I'd like to reach out to the, uh, the, the police and fire department, find out if, if they're having a problem public safety wise with, uh, with some dead spots, uh, where they, uh, where their radio transmissions aren't being heard, and, so that it's, it's not a public safety issue. And then maybe, if, if it is, maybe we can look at, at addressing it. And I know anybody that's out in their vehicle with a cellphone or in these areas, uh, it's not as bad when we had the old next tower, where you couldn't even, uh, talk from Groveland Square. But it's, uh, there, there are, uh, there are some dead spots, and, uh, I don't know that much about it, but maybe we need another cell tower.
So I can ask, I believe they have a repeater at the water tower site, um, for the radios, but I can certainly reach out to both and see if they have issues. As far as the cell tower behind us, we leased that to a company, and then they sublease it. So we get a monthly rent from them. Um, I actually don't know which providers are on it, um, but they do have several. So, we can, I can always contact them if there are specific dead spots, and see if they can bring in specific carriers if they're not currently here.
You know, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that it, uh, hopefully that it's not, uh, a, a, a public safety issue, that, uh, you know, I don't wanna see, uh, them being in a spot where they're not gonna be able to, uh, make any communication.
I'll find out.
You mentioned Seven Star Road. There was some, um, some concerns last, last year with, uh, I guess some hunters were a little closer than they should have been to some homes. And, um, so you bring up a really good point. I would wish that everyone would be able to pick up a phone or a cellphone or whatever, communicate with the police, and if there's a fire. So I'm wondering if, uh, the fire department, or maybe the police can go down and, and, and kinda map out what those dead, dead spots are. I wonder if that might be worth a try. Because we don't know if it's, you know, if it's what the length of the road is, it's, it's, how many houses and so forth.
You don't know particular provider or anything.
I know for years.
We probably need residents to comment.
Uh, I remember for years, even today, AT&T service is terrible. I couldn't reach my kids for twelve years at, uh, Penn Tucket. So, that was a real problem.
No, they didn't wanna answer.
Now I can't get them off the phone.
Ed, I would just suggest, if you hear from, or if you know the people that made complaints, if you wanna find out what carrier they use, we can start with at least trying to narrow down the carrier, if it's multiple, or if it's one specific one that we need to.
Sure.
Work on. But I'll talk to police and fire and find out for you.
And, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll just, uh, I mean, Bobby and his guys are out all the time. Just ask them if they have any problems in that area.
Sure. Okay, does have, anyone else have any for Sleckman time?
I do.
Okay, Dan?
The mosquitoes are out, and, um, spraying. Like to know from the Board of Health who handles that, what their plan is. I understand it was last year they found, I mean, they tasked certain areas, and they found some mosquitoes that had some pretty nasty diseases. So, you know, for mosquitoes carrying encephalitis or West Nile virus, I think we ought to do whatever we can to have a zero tolerance policy on that. Um, we need to eradicate that. Um, it can kill ya, it can cripple ya, so. Um, I'd like to follow up on that. Um, we have a lot of wetlands in town. It's controversial for some. I see there no spraying signs around everywhere, but I can care about my kids and other people.
So we do participate in northeast mosquito control. Uh, we did put a notice out to residents back. It's been several months. If they wanted to be on the do not spray list, they had to provide, actually sent, had to send certified, a request to come off of the list. Um, but I'll follow up and find out when or if they've sprayed.
And, uh, not only just spraying, but I would like to know the test results of the prior locations where they found, um, diseased carrying mosquitoes. Are those problem areas, and if they are, should those areas be sprayed in a higher concentration? Uh, but if we can't get rid of them, can we get some permission from the state DEP to mitigate in another way? Either drain the swamp or do something, but I, I just, I've never accepted the fact that there should be encephalitis carrying mosquitoes where I live. So I, I'd like to follow up on what tests are being done to just, uh, um, find out, uh, you know, how bad it is. So who does that? Is that our own Board of Health?
Board of Health with northeast mosquito, northeast mosquito control.
Can we get the test results?
Yep, I'll call them.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on.
There's a fox showing around town.
I was just gonna say that.
Should we talk about that?
I was just gonna say it.
That's big news, there's a fox that keeps showing up on.
I've had one in my driveway.
No, it's one mangy one.
Yeah, it's the mangy, he was out front of town hall eating a dead animal a few weeks ago in the middle of the day. Just right in the front lawn.
We should have him carry around a cellphone and check the signal up there.
Yeah. Oh, was it?
We had one in my driveway, which isn't too far from here, and we had the police coming. The, the police got right up close to it, and it didn't move. He scattered, and he, and they, he had to move, the police officer moved.
Oh, yeah, I have pictures. I was right out there with him. Just stood there, eating this dead animal.
Bring back hunting, certain kind of animals, then a few of them out. But anyway, um, does anyone else have anything on Sleckman time?
Great job.
I, I had, um, I had one, and kind of, what I was trying to take of, to be the liaison, is in hot topping. I know Bobby has a budget from chapter ninety money to do the hot topping of the roads, and I know in the past, I've heard, and it's not enough to do what he wanted to do.
It's never enough.
Right, never enough. So, what I was trying to do is, 'cause I'm gonna try and put a committee together, is there any way, I was gonna actually talk to Bob, and I've been busy, I haven't got to one, but you probably can answer this better than anyone, is there any way you can see to come up with some extra money to put toward the hot topping of the roads? We need to get some of these roads. I know we used to have the road study committee, and they did a great job. Um, it got to a point where a lot of the roads got done, they abolished that committee, but I think we're getting to the point now with, you know, he does what he can do with the money he got, but it just isn't enough.
Right, I, I mean.
It costs a hundred and something dollars a ton. You don't, you, you can't get a half a mile, and you're, you're right, twenty, thirty thousand dollars anyway.
Right. I will say, a lot of communities put chapter ninety in their capital plan and budget capital money each year, in addition to chapter ninety. Chapter ninety is never enough to do paving, that needs to be done.
Right, and I knew you were gonna kinda say that, so, um, do you think this fiscal year coming up, we should all, as a board, and you, look at throwing some extra money toward, maybe get Bob in here?
Well, it probably couldn't be this fiscal year, it'd have to go back.
Sixteen.
Seven, fiscal seventeen, we're in fiscal sixteen now. So as part of the budget process for next year. So as part of the budget process, yes, we can look and see if it's something that we can, you know, or if there's free cash, if there's something you wanna designate to chapter ninety.
Like, um, the capital improvements, they, they come up with some ideas or what have you, and then we have to go to funding. So we'd have to go to town meeting, to ask town meeting to appropriate whatever Bob would say would be a fair number, not a crazy number, but a fair number to get some extra roads done.
Correct.
Should we prioritize the roads that should be done first, instead of just saying?
That would be him. I, I wouldn't wanna micromanage him, but I think.
No, but I mean, you can't just say, do the roads.
No, no, right.
Right. He has a list sort of going that he knows, um, you know, some of them, like, like for instance, Governors is the big project that's coming up this summer, but it needs all new drainage. So, he needs to coordinate with the water department to get the drainage done before he can pave. Um, he's in the middle of the Route Ninety-seven project, which is gonna be that whole roadway. Um, so those things are priority, obviously, main roads are top priority, and then he goes to the side roads that are in the worst condition.
So can we, can we get him in, in the next couple meetings, to have him come in and just have the conversation, what he thinks, a number in his head? Or maybe you don't even need to bring him in. Maybe you can just come back to us and say, I talked to Bob, Bob thinks that he could use fifty, sixty, thirty, twenty, whatever it is, what number, and then we can work on as a board to come up with that extra money? I mean, I'm not looking to go crazy, I'm looking to try and.
Maximize it.
Yeah, try to get, you know, you've got to be proactive and keep the roads up.
Well, looking into re-instituting the road study committee. They were, they were pretty active, and they were instrumental in getting a lot, a lot of work done.
They were.
Is that what you plan on doing?
Yeah.
Maybe they can chase down some more grants.
Was there any grants available for hot topping?
For hot topping?
No.
Not that I know of.
We got to get it through town meeting, extra money.
Someone's got to go chase some money.
Unless you want to donate or let companies donate a road, and we can call it, instead of calling it the wing at the Bagno, they can call it Route ninety-seven done landscaping road or something like that.
Sponsor a mile type of thing.
Yeah, sponsor a mile, yeah, I know.
I like it, sponsor a hundred feet.
Anyway, so could you work, have that conversation with him and get back to us with a number that he thinks might work?
We do the sponsor a mile thing, we're going to have a forest of signs in this town.
Right. Well, I was trying to sponsor islands, and that didn't go well, but I got mine going, so.
Wouldn't hurt.
Well-
I think we need a committee on it, and I'm not a big fan of committees, but it seems like a complex issue, and it seems like a complex issue.
Well, we can, we can get a committee going.
Was there one before?
There was one, there was a road study committee for years.
If I pay for a whole street to be paved, I don't have the money.
And it was effective.
What?
It was effective.
Very effective.
Why was it disbanded?
Because what happened, we got to a point where a lot of the roads in the town were done, and it, a lot of people, some roads weren't getting done, other roads were getting done, but it was getting down to the point where it was getting to the nitty-gritty, and it became kind of confrontational, I believe. And what happened was is-
Evidence political in town, do my street first.
That's kind of what happened.
I don't want to be Z, I want to be A.
Right, so I-
I mean, Governor's Road is like, you know, it's, I've been down dirt roads smoother than main.
But I don't think we should be telling the road commission what roads, because hopefully he's hired for a reason, he knows what roads need to be done.
He's elected official, if we said, "These are the top ten, can you work them down?" It's not stepping on his toes, it's-
I, I agree, I mean, you know, last year we were talking about the acres, you know, the Harvard, uh-
Right.
Those streets were done, those streets were done when John F. Kennedy was inaugurated, when he was doing his speech. That same week.
I can ask him if he has a sort of list that he plans to work on, and we can start with that. And if you want to have him in and talk about a study, road study, you can certainly do that.
And I will go on record that I would like to have also, on that list of priority, doing a little piece in the cemetery every year. Simple idea, you can do five roads this year, let's do four, one in the cemetery. Next year you can do two roads, one and one in the cemetery. The year after that we can do three roads, two, and then one in the cemetery. Over a five-year period, we'll have the cemetery done. Just a concept, I'm not, but we need to, we need to prioritize that.
Well, I know when I was on the cemetery commission, then we implemented to have all the main roads done. They were all, the main roads to get up, the limousines, up and around and up to the building were done. So, I believe there was maybe two or three roads that needed to be done, because a lot of them were going to be turned into cremation sites and what have you.
Right.
I don't know if they're still on that program, but we had a program, we were taking roads out to put cremation sites in, because we run out of spaces, but-
Yes, so there, at, at the front door you'll see the display board. So they are working on, they have a drainage plan, they're working with an engineer, they're going to get the drainage underway. The highway department's feeling was it's not worth paving those when there's drainage issues. We need to address the drainage first, and then he's going to start working on, exactly like you said, if he can do one street a year. The cemetery commissioners are removing some of those streets to make room for new sites. So that, that is an active plan that they are still implementing.
Right.
Just a question on that. Those, a couple of years ago, all those roads up at the cemetery were accepted as public ways. If they're going to disband them, they ought to, they ought to come and take a vote to disband those. And the same thing with the direction signs that they're looking at. They're public ways, there's a proper, there should be a proper procedure to go about it.